We're still here. I think we quietly were waiting. We thought Commissioner Heller was going to sign on really soon. But it seems to be a little bit of a delay and we're live on YouTube now, so nobody wants to chat Ron while we're live on YouTube, but the meeting hasn't started.
Yeah, she did just ask me to resend her the link. She probably didn't want to search through all the emails that I sent. So she should be joining any second.
So for members of the public, if anybody's out there watching and wondering why it's silent. You're just waiting for the commissioners to all get to the meeting. So we have quorum and then we will start. Okay. Commissioner Heller is now in the room. Okay, so then we're ready to get started, right? Think that is a yes.
Yeah.
I don't know. Is anyone gonna, if the commissioner's gonna turn the camera or not, it's up to you. This is Lisa Anderson will be the planning administrator. We don't have a president or vice president at the meeting tonight. So as secretary, I am calling the meeting to order. Thank you, Commissioner Heller for coming and I hope your dog or puppy is okay. Oh, no. So we, because we don't have a president or vice president, we need a motion to ask somebody to be the temporary presiding officer. And Commissioner Heller, while we were waiting, there was lots of discussion and I think everyone agreed that somebody should nominate Commissioner Levin and that he was willing to accept. So that might happen. So I will stop talking and let commissioners decide if they want to nominate somebody to be the presiding officer.
Yes.
I will make the vote to nominate Commissioner Levin to serve as president for this session.
I second.
Great. And any discussion on that motion? Okay, I guess we'll call for the vote. Shelby, will you do a roll call?
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin. Oh.
Uh oh.
Uh oh.
Oh, no.
In the meeting. Maybe he's having internet problems. Oh, here he comes back. Commissioner Levin, you were nominated. It was seconded and we're voting on making you the presiding officer. And Shelby called on you. So do you say aye to being the presiding officer?
Aye. Sorry, I lost cell service there for a second.
Dang Hawaii, Commissioner Pollock.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
So Levin is president. Or acting presiding officer, sorry.
Presiding officer, yes. So I think, I don't know if you have the agenda in front of you, Commissioner Levin? If not, I think you would want to ask Shelby to do roll call.
Yep. And I can go through the, the agenda too for you, Commissioner Levin, tonight if that would help.
Well, I think you should just do roll call.
Okay, I'll go through roll. Commissioner Augustine is absent, excused. Commissioner Griggs is absent, excused. Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho.
I am also here.
Commissioner Levin.
Your mic is off.
I'm gonna see if I can. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Pollock.
Here.
And Commissioner Slater.
Here.
We have quorum. So I'm gonna go consent calendar. We don't have anything. That's agenda item number three. Number four, public hearings. We have none. So we're gonna move on to agenda item number five, special orders of business. Unified Development Code Amendment Work Session. Bryce, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Shelby. Let me get sharing my screen here. Okay, so actually, let's see, you do not want to see me there. Let me minimize that. Okay, so good evening, planning commissioners. Bryce Bishop with the Planning Division. And I'm here tonight to present the last of a series of amendments that we're proposing to the Unified Development Code. Before they go to public hearing, which is anticipated on next month on September 21st. So in terms of, you know, there's quite a few different areas of amendments that we'll be talking about this morning. Ranging from keeping of animals to, you know, bike parking and, and, you know, changes to the bike or the off street parking chapter. So in terms of, you know, the first set of regulations, this deals with the, in addition to the number, the types of animals that we allow to be kept in the city. So right now, under chapter 50, which is a property maintenance chapter, we identify keeping of bees, chickens and ducks as being allowed types of animal, animals that may be kept in a residence or a community garden or or an area associated or open area associated with the school. You know, we did have and we had, and we do have in the code, the keeping of miniature swine that has been in or pot belly pigs, which has been in the code for quite some time. It is currently located in a different chapter of the code, chapter 95. And since we've, you know, change, start, we started changing chapter 50, you know, over the years to include keeping of animals, you know, that are being kept outside of the use classifications of the UDC and they're just being kept as residences in residences similar to like almost like household pets. We've decided to move the keeping of miniature swine over to chapter 50 to be with the, you know, keeping of chickens and ducks. And, you know, the standards for the keeping of miniature swine have not changed. There's a size limit on how large the miniature swine can be and a height that it can be. And it has to be spayed or neutered and you can only have one per residence. And again, so not changing any of the standards for them. They've been allowed, you know, for quite some time and we're just moving it from one chapter to another chapter. What we are proposing to change with this amendment is expansion of the types of poultry that are allowed currently. Only ducks and chickens are allowed. It started with chickens and then the numbers of chickens have increased over the years. And then last, with our last UDC update, we expanded to allow the keeping of ducks along with chickens. You know, for a total of no more than six birds. But based on outreach we've received from community members, there is a desire to continue, you know, to have a greater variety of urban animals allowed. And, and, you know, is there are comments that were received, you know, tonight for the meeting that indicate, you know, the ability to have, you know, more birds is important, especially like, you know, with our previous year experience with the pandemic, it provides a way for people to have, you know, sorts of, you know, protein, eggs, meat. You know, and helps to feed families. And so it's a, it's a, almost a way to promote resiliency too, because in sustainability. So we're proposing with this amendment to increase the number of birds that are allowed from six to 12. We're expanding the types of birds that may be kept from just chickens and ducks to include, you know, you know, small to medium sized poultry such as partridges, quails, pheasants, doves and those similar type birds, larger birds such as geese, turkeys, emus, ostriches, you know, we're not proposing, you know, to allow with this amendment. The current standards that we have, you know, for the keeping of ducks and chickens will, you know, be applied, you know, to these animals as well because they'll be located in the same section. So in terms of the coop size and the run size and, you know, the setbacks, those will, you know, remain consistent with what we currently have for chickens and ducks today. So we're expanding the number, either the types of birds allowed and then increasing the number of birds allowed by, by a little bit. That would be that, that section and, you know, kind of how we've done it in the past. If there are questions, you know, it's probably best to like, if we have questions, you know, about the section, we can address those questions now. And then if not, we can move on, you know, to the next set of amendments.
I guess I don't have a question so much as just a concern that as we're working to increase density and bring people closer and closer together, we're expanding the number and types of animals that people can keep in their houses or backyards. I'm not sure that's necessarily compatible and I'm not, I don't understand really the need to do this. So I, again, I don't have a question, but I, I'm not necessarily sure that expanding animal husbandry in urban areas is, is the future of where we want to go. And we're not just increasing it by a little bit, we're doubling it in terms of the number of birds allowed. Maybe that just makes me a curmudgeon.
Oh, no, no, that's, you know, that, that's a valid concern with, you know, thank, you know, thank you for that. You know, I, I think, you know, you know, I, I don't keep, you know, man, I mean, a bird, chickens or birds or poultry myself for miniature swine and, you know, but you know, it's, you know, the, you know, there are folks that, you know, really, you know, have that as, as a goal and they want to have that, you know, wanting, want to keep the animals and have fresh eggs. So I don't know, just because if we're, you know, increasing the density that everybody, like everybody that's living now in a, in a, in a duplex or a triplex will be, everybody will have, you know, chickens and ducks, you know, it, it, you know, if they're smaller lots, you know, for some of these developments with smaller backyards and not enough space to accommodate the coops and the setbacks that in itself might be, you know, deterrent and prevent that from happening. But it, it does, you know, provide a mechanism for individuals to keep such animals, you know, if they, if they desire.
Commissioner Slater, when I agree with Bryce, I was gonna say the same thing that, that we're keeping the standards that are required for the coops. And that includes some, some setback standards for how far from your house and neighbor's house. So I agree, not, not every lot probably. Especially with new like middle housing and kind of smaller lot sizes would be able necessarily to accommodate them. This is a direct request from, from a resident and I believe they submitted testimony and their request was to have a lot more than 12. And, and their reasoning was they had a big family and they, they, you know, have chickens, but they just want more eggs. The quail is a request, a long standing request we've had for the last few years. And I think that gentleman also submitted testimony and quail are really small, so he wants a lot more than 12. Because they don't take up as much space as chickens. So I'm not sure that we've landed at the right number. So, or that, you know, maybe we shouldn't increase it at all. But we've had some requests. We haven't received really any opposition, but we haven't, tonight's kind of our first night of showing people that, you know, I guess in the last week, since we sent this out, that this might be a proposal. So we might hear more. We do, I do think though, like just if we're gonna allow chickens and then now, now we allow ducks because one person asked for ducks. And then one person's asking for quails and it's kind of the same, that it makes more sense to just broaden the, the definition and just allow more of a similar type of birds, you know, if you can get eggs from it, because there's always somebody that has this one special kind of bird or poultry that they really want and they, they're not a chicken person, but they really like something else. But, you know, if you can.
Pigeons?
Pigeons? What did you say about pigeons?
And the rationale for pigeons is?
Oh, yeah, we, we had somebody that, that has pigeons, that's another one. And then they, the neighbors complained and code compliance got involved and and they questioned why we allow chickens but not pigeons. And they had a lot of kind of information about how the impact from their pigeons isn't, isn't any worse than, than chickens or ducks. And we didn't really have, we don't really have a good reason why we don't, we just don't allow pigeons. But yeah, your neighbor can have chickens. So. I don't know. 12 doesn't seem to be too much in my view. My neighbor has chickens. I'm staring at the chickens right now. And they haven't caused a problem. I did ask code compliance if they've had a lot of problems with, you know, if they've worked on a lot of cases that have to do with either chickens or people having other poultry that's not allowed. And they said the main thing is that it's not the number. From their experience, it's once somebody isn't caring for them appropriately, then it can cause there to be a rat infest, infestation in the neighborhood. If they're not keeping the coop clean or putting chicken feed like kind of all over the backyard or something. And that from their perspective, it's more about if the person's appropriately caring for the birds versus the number and like how big of an area is being used for it. I will say like Bryce, I'm not a, I don't have poultry, I don't have miniature pigs. Won't be the expert on that. I do think both, both folks that submitted the written testimony today, which you may not have seen, it just came in, I think pretty late this afternoon, Shelby sent it out. I think they both plan to testify at the September public hearing. And so it might be, they could answer some of those questions better than we can, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So moving on to the next.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's still a couple commissioners that have some questions on that one. So Commissioner Copcho.
Thank you. Yes, I was, I was gonna do it if you didn't. So I guess I probably take a different lens than Commissioner Slater in that I don't really mind it. You know, I know a lot of folks that have chickens. And the, the level of effort required to, you know, I'm looking at the picture here in the presentation. And when people go through that level of effort to keep chickens or poultry, they, they tend to take good care of, of the property and, and mitigate, you know, any, any sort of nuisance. So I think having a framework in place to allow people to do these things is a good idea. My, my question, I guess generally was already, my hand was still up, but I'm, my question was already answered by Lisa in that regarding the testimony that we did receive in increasing the number of smaller birds based on the ratio of feed and other things like that. If that was considered, I don't know, you know, based on that one piece of testimony, if that's, that's all the evidence I have. I don't know how sufficient that is of evidence that that is the case. But I, I would be interested to, to look more at the math or see more on, you know, small game versus, you know, larger birds. Other than that, you know, I don't, I don't really have any questions so much as I don't, I don't see an issue. I, I do remember though, a few years back when we did do, when we talked about the ducks and the bees in particular. And I'm sure commissioners Levin and Pollock will remember that, those sessions, we had a lot more feedback than I think. You know, I was necessarily anticipating. So I, I could see this being said.
This is President Levin. I did not see who raised their hand first between Commissioners Pollock and Commissioner Heller, but I will call on Commissioner Pollock to go first and then followed by Commissioner Heller for comment or questions.
Thank you. Um, I think Heller did it first, but I'll go quickly. First of all, I want to, the reason why I testified on this, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen, when we first got the chickens code up for consideration to the council. And the reason why we put chickens is because we didn't want roosters in the neighborhood because of the noise that they make. So I see that you changed the poultry, but I also see that the standard section, which does change the amount, does continue to prohibit the roosters. So that is a great thing because we don't want, we, the part of it is it's a rooster to create a nuisance. Public or private, I don't know which one you want to consider it, but the, it's, I'm glad that's there. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I did testify is that, and I, I, I could go back and get it, but I have it all, I testified to all the Oregon Supreme Court cases. What says that you cannot, that the, that a local government or any government cannot make a rule that impairs a private contract. And homeowners association generally always prohibit these kind of codes for any kind of stock or birds or anything such as that. So I just want to make sure in, in the all the prior attorneys that I have asked about this is that because you cannot impair a private contract and because most homeowners prohibit this and that prohibition is more stringent than this code, that I just want to clarify that even though this is allowed by the city, it still does not impact a homeowners association to prohibit any kind of stock or birds. That's my last thing. I want to make sure that we put, we put that on the record. Thanks.
And Commissioner Heller?
Oh, well, okay. Thank you. Um, I like the idea of, of the smaller birds like quail and I was curious if you have considered adding additional quail and small birds to your, to the rule rather than limiting them to 12.
At this point, I think we're trying to, you know, keep a consistent number of birds and minimize, you know, the, you know, the big change, you know, 6 to 12 is, you know, Commissioner Slater indicated that's like doubling or, you know, doubling the size. But certainly there is the possibility, yet like Lisa said, we don't know if we've landed on the right number. I, I think it would be, you know, if we were going to have a, you know, a different number or more, you know, yeah, then we should get more specific and tailored to the specific, you know, types of birds. A lot more for this, you know, more of the smaller. But at this point, we're just recommending to try to keep it simple, you know, 12 birds total, you know. You know, you can mix, you can mix them because the other thing is, you know, two, this is 12 totals. You could have, you know, you know, six ducks and four chickens and two, you know, pheasants, you know.
I see. Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. So unless there's any further recommendations for staff, I'll ask Bryce to move on to the next item.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one is a change to the code in relation to state law. This is Senate Bill 458. It is the requirement that, you know, comes after the, came after the adoption of House Bill 2001. And what it does is requires local governments to have a process in place where, by a property that was developed for middle housing, you know, such as townhouses, two duplex, triplex, quadplex, or cottage cluster development that the owner can come in and then do a land division to divide, you know, the land that those units are sitting on to create, you know, one lot for each, you know, dwelling unit. It doesn't allow you to, you know, divide the lot, you know, and have, you know, multiple units on a lot. And it really applies to, you've developed or you're proposing develop middle housing on a, on a property. And then you want to divide it to provide the opportunity for ownership of those individual units. And so, you know, there's a new, in order to implement this, you know, requirement, we're creating a new section in our land division ordinance, chapter 205. And as part of that, it identifies, you know, the smittle requirements, procedure type and approval criteria that are associated with it and all the requirements that are large are, will have to be based on, on the bill. Because again, the bill is very prescriptive, like House Bill 2001 and really mandates the things that the city can require of these types of applications. This line division again applies to middle housing. So townhouses, you know, duplexes, three complexes, fourplexes and cottage clusters. It read that the bill requires that it, the review doesn't follow the traditional land division processes such as a subdivision or partition, but rather goes through an expedited land division process that's established in, under the ORS. And, you know, there's slightly different comment periods and the staff, the decision would still be a, a decision that's made by staff following public notice being provided to surrounding property owners. One of the big differences though is if it gets appealed, that decision goes to what the statute calls a referee, which the statute allows the city to designate. It's supposed to be an independent body, but the bill allows us to designate a hearings officer if a jurisdiction have one, has one as the referee. So, you know, instead of coming, the partition coming to the planning commission, it would go to the, to the hearings officer, you know, on this. And, you know, so the, the basic crux of it is, you know, they submit an application for a lot that is either, you know, being proposed for middle housing or has been developed for middle housing. And we have to, there's, there's two reviews it has had to occur. There's the one review, you know, to make sure that the development that was the middle housing that's on the property today or that's proposed to be developed on that existing lot, the one lot. That it, the units that are cited on that lot, to meet all the setback requirements, the parking standards and everything, all the other standards of the code. And then if it's determined that yes, the proposed middle housing or the existing middle housing as it sits on that existing lot today meets the standards, then it allows, you know, the, the kind of the second half for the property to be divided. And so when it's divided, that's when the standards become much, you know, much different. And then that's where the bill really prescribes what a city can, can require. And it's not very much because it's, the intent is to ensure that, you know, pretty much regardless of the size or configuration, you can have those, those existing units that met the standards when they were located on the lot originally, that they can be divided off, you know, for individual ownership, you know, purposes. And so for instance, we can't require a minimum frontage requirement for those lots. You know, we can require that it's boundary street improvements, you know, for those properties and that adequate facilities or infrastructure, water to where in storm is provided. But in terms of minimum lot size, you know, setbacks, you know, we can't require any of that, you know, that, that is all kind of based on. But in terms of minimum lot size, you know, setbacks, you know, we can't require any of that, you know, that that is all kind of based on the development met the standards on the original original lot. And then if it does that, then it's very flexible in terms of how you can, you know, divide, you know, the property to create those lots for each one of those units. They have to all have unnecessary easements, you know, for access, you know, to parking and to in sidewalks, you know, because these could be, it could be a triplex on a lot that was that was all attached. And then the applicant wants to come in and then divide those that triplex into into three separate lots. And so the lots would be going through the building. And so the bill does require that any, you know, wherever they draw those lines, that the new building, that the building, you know, with the lines going through it meets the building code requirements for fire and life safety. So there are those those requirements. But in terms of the general land division standards of lot size setbacks to the existing buildings, lot area or lot area width, depth, frontage, those aren't subject to review. It's just, you know, the lots, the buildings on the lots that are proposed are are safe and there's easements that are provided to for access for to to parking areas and to common areas. And that's pretty much it. And it and it is again, limited to just, they can only, the land division can only result in one unit on a lot. You can't, you know, divide it and then like come in and then do more, you know, units later on. It's just really taking, you know, what is existing or what is proposed as middle housing on that lot and creating lot lines around it.
Commissioner Pollock has a question and followed by Commissioner Cotto.
Just real quick, this is really great. I, the only thing is there's a point here where it says comply with Oregon residential specialty code.
Mm hmm.
I I don't know what that is.
That's 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 a code for about the building, a building code, yeah, building per part of the building code.
Oh, okay. And the specialty would be applied because it's the middle housing?
Uh, no, it's just, you know, it's, yeah, it's tied to the type of housing, the residential specialty code. It's it's applied to the type of housing. So again, we're wanting to make sure that how they're dividing that lot and, you know, creating new lines amongst and between those buildings on that lot that they meet all required, you know, separations for, you know, fire and life safety, area requirements, you know, so all of that. So the idea is to not, you know, let them, you know, have three units built on a lot and then let them come in and just like divide it and 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 things not be safe. You know, the the bill does, you know, require that it has to meet all those, all the building code requirements, which include the Oregon residential specialty code.
And just real quick, and I'm glad that you asked for, that you put in there, you're asking for a title report, but our current title report, do we own our, I'm glad because it's going to keep things clear, but do we normally ask for that?
We do. Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Before the next comment, I just want to jump in for a little bit of clarification because Commissioner Pollock brought it up. What Bryce was referring to is the Oregon specialty code. The universal development code on a national level, if you look up development standards is the the, let's say, umbrella. And then each state is referred to as like the Oregon specialty, quote unquote. And so it's just like Oregon's building code, Oregon's fire code. Each book of code standards is the Oregon fire specialty, Oregon building specialty. It's so it's not a special or what would be like, as we deal with like conditional use permits, it wouldn't be like a special use or anything. It's just the the titleship of of the codes as they're broken up by states.
Okay, so to wrap my mind about it, because since I'm always trained in business, it would be like the modeled uni, the federal model commercial code, but yeah, then you have Oregon commercial code. So that would be like what we're talking about then.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And then we have a hand raised from Commissioner Cotto.
Yeah, thanks. Um, thank you, Bryce. I I I just wanted to say a couple of things and and put it on the record just because it's kind of a complicated topic. And and I know that when we start talking about partitioning land and and doing stuff that folks who are maybe watching or may watch this later are going to have a lot of questions. And and I really appreciate the clarity, the presentation, and especially the speed with which you all drew up the new section 205. And I read through the proposed code and the changes for the the middle housing land divisions, and I I think they'll go a long way into helping the city address some of the supply issues, the crisis kind of of supply that we virtually every other city in the in the country have right now. And and one of the things that I think we, you know, I just want to make sure is clear for folks that there's for decades has been too few opportunities for entry level homeownership, especially for folks who don't inherit any sort of generational wealth and whose families didn't own houses and pass them along. And that category typically disproportionately is represented by marginalized communities of color. And so I think this is an important tool for helping rectify that. I don't think it's something that's going to solve everything on its own. It's just one small piece of the puzzle. But it is a step in the right direction. I think that you you did a good job with 205. I think it'll still require a lot of work on behalf of of the city to to make sure those opportunities are filled, but I appreciate it. So, thanks.
And I don't see any, any other hands raised. So Bryce, if you want to continue on to the next topic.
Okay. So the next set of amendments still with our site planner view chapter, chapter 220. And so we're making a few changes to this chapter. So the first change highlighted here is that requiring a class one site planner view prior to a change of use when no building permit is otherwise required. The second one is is we're just exempting three family, four family and cottage clusters from site planner view to be consistent with House Bill 2001, which requires us to treat those middle housing uses the same as we do for single family and two family, single family and two family are currently exempt from site planner view. They only need to get a building permit. And so the same will be the case for three family, four family and, you know, cottage clusters. We're proposing to clarify in the code that, you know, some it often it comes up, people ask, you know, and so we want to make it more clear. You know, that if a build, you know, if a building permit, you know, requires a, if a fence requires a building permit and site planner view is required for building permits, does that mean that I gotta have to have site planner view for my fence? And the answer is no. So we're adding fences to the, you know, the exemption list of things that aren't, that don't need to have site planner view. And they're also clarifying that demolition permits, which are also a type of building permit that we have in the city is also a is not a, you know, something that triggers site planner view. We also have a situation where, you know, in terms of the different types of class ones, like or site planner view, we have class one, two and three. Class three is site planner view that involves anything that any kind of land use decision that involves discretion or legal judgment and and applying the standards to a development. And so we've had circumstances, you know, before where they've been voluntary, where and then applicant, you know, in order to address concerns, you know, from a you know, from a, you know, a certain property owner who's wanting to wanted to have conditions of approval placed on the development in a good faith effort to show that, yes, we're willing to comply with this to minimize your with these this, these conditions to minimize the the concerns you've addressed. But there really is no way, you know, for us to put conditions of approval on a development that is not a limited land use decision or a or land use decision. So we've identified any development that either requires conditions of approval to be imposed on it, or where there are conditions that are just imposed generally. You know, voluntarily even that that would be, you know, a trigger for class three site planner view. And so for most, most circumstances, you know, we'll never really need this. It's just, you know, in a few circumstances that we've had where people have wanted to voluntarily have conditions applied to their decision. And it wasn't just enough to tell the neighbors that they were going to have those conditions. They want wanted it to be like part of the formal decision. This gives us a way to, you know, you know, put those projects through a class three site planner view and then meets the applicant's desire and then, you know, helps to address the concerns of the neighbors. But again, I don't, we don't expect this to, you know, be used very much, you know, for the most part. You know, anything that requires an adjustment or a variance or or any other kind of land use approval or discretionary land use decision that's tied to a building permit, that's a trigger for class three site planner view. So the conditions one won't be used that often. I don't imagine, but we've put it in there as an additional, you know, tool for flexibility when those circumstances arise. And then finally, you know, once we've had a gap in our site planner view chapter, you know, we require developments to be reviewed for conformance with all of the applicable standards of of the code. And so one of those standards of the code is always building height, you know, so when any, whenever something is constructed, there's a requirement, you know, that it meet, you know, building height requirements. And then it's even more important when, you know, you have developments that have there are overlay zones and they have design review associated with them. You know, we get elevations in the designer view, you know, portion of that application. But if it's an application that is for, you know, new building on a property, you know, we don't require building elevation. So there's, there's really no way that we can say that the building meets all of the standards because, you know, we don't have any elevation to evaluate the proposal. We get elevations, you know, you know, in a lot of our applications, but we're for a site planner view, but in for class two and class three, that is, that are that aren't, that aren't just interior, you know, changes. So we're proposing to add, you know, building elevations as a smittle requirement to site planner view for any new buildings or any buildings that are proposed to be added, you know, on to where their heights increasing. And then again, that just helps us to be able to, you know, review the development fully for compliance with all of the standards of the code, including height.
Thank you, Bryce. Before I call on Commissioners, just for one's reeducation, could you super briefly summarize the difference between class one and class two? And then I think we all kind of understand class three at this point, but just so folks have a basis for comment.
Yeah. So class one site planner view is essentially site planner view that is only, you know, for interior construction or tenant improvements within the building itself. So you're not making the building bigger. You're not modifying the parking lot. You're not doing anything. You're just, you know, changing the use and you're putting it in this building, a new use in the building, but you're not doing any, and you need to get a building permit because you're changing the entire interior, you're changing walls, you know, you're exiting and all that. But, you know, it's just interior only. Class two site plan review is anything that, anything that requires a building permit or anything where you're modifying the site, such as changing your parking lot, you know, reconfiguration, removing pavement, putting pavement, new pavement back. So anything outside of the to the building itself outside or the site outside. And that, and as long as you you're making changes to the outside of the building or the site and you're you're not triggering a land use decision, then it's a class two site planner view. And that site planner view is not a site planner view that requires any public comment. It's just a staff decision. And it's based on the clear and objective standards of the three, class one, two and three, the only one that requires public notice is the class three site planner view. Class one and two are just staff decisions that review the permit for compliant or the the development for compliance with the provisions of the code.
Thank you. So we have a hand raised by Commissioner Pollock.
So this is, is this for residential too, or?
No, you know, residential, yeah.
That's what, that's, okay, that's it. I don't need the, I I then I'm fine then. I have no questions now.
Give it just a second. I don't see any other hands coming up. I think this one was pretty straightforward. I have a maybe a question that is loosely related, but not to the recommended changes, more just curiosity. In years past, planning had a infield plan review. And there was like a change of use, but there wasn't any construction happening. Does that infield plan review still exist or did we get rid of that?
I, you know, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but you might be thinking of, you know, a process the building and safety has.
Yes, yeah, because can
Can you well?
Eat well, used to do the infield plan review.
I, you know, I'm not, Lisa, do you, are you aware, you know, it is, is just the plant, the building officials still maintain that program?
Yeah, I think I think so. I believe so. We can double check. Yeah, we can double check, but I believe so.
Okay. Well, nobody else raised their hand for comment or questions. So I will say we can move on if nobody has any other comments. Looks like we're free to proceed.
Okay, thank you. So the next one are a few changes to our manufactured dwelling parks chapter that are based on, you know, some long needed changes to the chapter to comply with state law. So there, you know, through the review of, you know, some different park permits, you know, we've done, you know, here in the last few years, we've, you know, realized that we do have an issue with our manufactured dwelling park chapter not necessarily aligning fully with state law in a couple of areas. And, you know, those areas deal with, you know, in terms of what we allow for recreational vehicles, you know, how we allow, how we allow recreational vehicles to be utilized in the park. And then also within manufact manufacturers dwelling parks in the RA residential agriculture and the RS, single family residential zone that are less than three acres in size, what standards, you know, we can apply to those, there's specific prohibitions in terms of what we can and can't do. So in terms of recreational vehicles being, you know, allowed in parks, our code allows them today to be stored in in a manufactured, you know, dwelling park. If it's like essentially the RV that's associated with the person who lives in the park and it can be in their driveway or in a side yard that's green. Typically, you know, the same way you would see in any subdivision when you're storing an RV. The the question, though, with and how and where a code doesn't comply or the issue where a code doesn't comply, it comes down to, you know, whether or not that a recreational vehicle can actually be used as a as a dwelling and occupied as a residence in a manufactured dwelling park. And so state statute under ORS 197 493 does, you know, that precludes the city from prohibiting the occupancy of a recreational vehicle solely because it's a recreational vehicle. It requires us to allow the recreational vehicle to be occupied in the park if it's in a manufactured dwelling park space and it's lawfully connected to water, sewer and electricity. So, you know, we've, our code currently doesn't allow that to occur. It only would allow the storing of the RV associated with like the the person who owns it. But so this change would align with state law to allow the recreational vehicle, allow a recreational vehicle to be occupied on a manufactured dwelling park space when it's connected to lawfully the services. The other one deals with, you know, the the appearance and size requirements. So for today in the manufactured dwelling park chapter, we have a minimum size of 864 square feet that applies to manufactured dwelling parks that are less than three acres in size and RA and RS owns. And then we also require the the foundation to be skirt, you know, have skirting. And so those two things are not, the size and the skirting are specifically not allowed under the state law. What we can require is roof slope, three to one pitch, and then also siding of a material that is in an appearance is similar to those used in dwellings in the surrounding community. So we do have the slope, roof slope minimums, and we do have the the siding requirement. The two, you know, we're keeping those, those aren't in violation of, you know, the of state laws, the minimum size and the skirting. So we're proposing to to remove those from the manufactured dwelling park chapter.
Well, thank you, Bryce. Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Commissioner Pollock.
Thank you. So, um, on section, let's see, section, I think it's two. E2, which is storage of recreation vehicles is allowed in the following locations on driveways within a yard adjacent to the street. What is that?
It's, you know, it's like, you know, in your, in your own residential neighborhood. If you have your driveway leading to your garage, you can park and you can park an RV in that. You could park a motorhome, you could park a tent trailer. You can park an RV in that driveway leading to your garage.
Well, see, the the thing is, I thought that when I looked this up before, when it talked to driveways and what was allowed in there, it said motor vehicles. And then it said any, any, any vehicle, any vehicle that has a bedroom or can have someone reside is a recreation vehicle and only motor vehicles can be in the driveway. I think there might be a conflict. Personally, I don't like, I don't like these motor homes and driveways, but I think a lot of people in Oregon would probably, you know.
So that
that, but still, I just want to make sure there's no conflict.
So 235 allows, you know, RVs to be stored, you know, kind of like for the the people who own it, they're used. But then also if, you know, somebody has an RV and they want to live in that RV and park it on a space on an approved, you know, on a manufactured dwelling park space. Essentially, that RV can, you know, serve as a manufactured home in the park.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just talking about storage at this point. So, um, I just want to make sure that before we go up for vote that you've, that I maybe afterwards I'll find that code and show it to you and make sure that we don't have a conflict between that code that just talks about driveways and then this code that allows a recreational vehicle. Because I, I think the other code says motor vehicles and it basically shows in the definition that a Shows in the definition that a, uh, recreational vehicle is a motor vehicle with a. A, um, is, well, is not a motor vehicle because it has a bed in it. So I just want to make sure that there's no conflict there. So.
Yeah, if you could share that, yeah. Me and we could, yep, we can, we can talk about that. So great.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised. I'd say let's proceed.
Okay. So the next, uh, set of amendments is dealing with our annexation, uh, procedures chapter, which is chapter two sixty. Uh, so this deals with how the city, uh, goes about, uh, and how property owners go about as well. Uh, petitioning to annex land into the city limits, uh, that is not currently within the city limits. Uh, so today the annexation chapter, it is in the UDC, it's chapter two sixty, but when we originally did the UDC. Uh, you know, because the standards are, were a little bit different, you know, at the time and we, and. And, you know, we decided that we were going to keep it separate, you know, that keep it, keep its procedures and all the unique nuances associated with. The annexation process and voter referral and, and all of that in its own chapter. So, uh, even though it's in the UDC, you know. Uh, the annexation chapter just kind of existed its own little island. Uh, but as we've gone on with, you know, administering the UDC since it was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, I think we've come to realize that it's not necessarily. Needed to keep, you know, annexation procedures separate, you know, the annexation, you know, process, and especially when they're asking when a. When then applicant, uh, or the city is proposing to change the comp plan and zoning designation of the property with the annexation, it really is a land use decision. So what we're, what we're trying to do with this chapter is one, you know. First and foremost, you know, there's been change, there's been some changes to state law in terms of, you know, what, when, you know, you can require, you know, voter approval. For annexation. So we want to make sure that the chapter, it, you know, reflects, you know, requirements for state law that have been, you know, changed for some time and our code has existed. Kind of out of conformance of those requirements for a while now, uh, to do that. And then we also want to make sure that, um, you know, try to, you know, simplify the chapter. You know, take all those things from it that we really don't need that to be in the code, allow those to be addressed through. Uh, you know, administrative policies and protocols we have internally. And then try to, you know, have it so the procedures, you know, for the annexation really line up with the procedures that we have for all other land use applications. And so. In that process of looking at the chapter, uh, we've, you know, essentially identified, you know, there are two types of annexations. There's. Annexations with a comprehensive plan change. Or a minor, or a minor comprehensive plan map amendment or a zone change, or those without a comprehensive plan map amendment or a zone change. And then, you know, depending, you know, those are the two main types, then there are different caveats in terms of whether or not voter approval is required. Uh, or not, you know, based on the different circumstance, for instance, voter approval is not required. If it is subject to a, then a pre-existing, you know, annexation agreement, uh, you know, that was, it was existing prior to. The, the, the date specified in the code. Uh, if all the property owners within, you know, the territory to be annexed have signed the application and consent to its, to the property being annexed. And other, and other, you know, in health hazard ordinances or health hazard situations where you have a failing septic system or a. A health hazard on the property that's been verified by the, by the DQ or the, the county sanitarian. Um, those are all secret search situations where voter approval isn't required. Uh, so we've tried to make it clearer than what it is today. And I think what we see in the chapter does do that. It kind of takes. All the annexation stuff puts it into one section under two sixty, oh, one oh, which is annexations. It identifies, you know, the types of annexations, you know, whether or not voter approval is required and the thresholds for that. Um, the, the procedure types, some middle requirements and approval criteria to be reflective of the other chapters of the UDC. Yeah, that have the same requirements. Uh, so that, that we propose that change. Uh, there are a number of changes, uh, to the, to the procedures ordinance chapter three hundred to do that in terms of. Uh, who the note, who notice goes to, we've had to add in a few places and, uh. And then we've also standardized right now, the annexation chapter has its own approval criteria that are specific to complan's own changes with an annexation that are different than the normal. You know, complan, excuse me, complan's own change approval criteria. So we're, uh, applying the same. You know, complan's own change approval criteria to annexations as we would do any other complan's own change or fixing that. And, uh, and then just to really kind of circle back real quick before I stop and then, you know, open up for questions. Uh, there are two, you know, the, the, the type of annexation without a complan, uh, zone change is a. Type three procedure which requires a hearing that goes to the city council. And then the, the annexation that has a complan zone change with it. It's a type four procedure that comes to, would come to the planning commission first for a recommendation as to what the appropriate. Uh, zoning, uh, the, you know, the property is, you know, whether it should be, um, you know. And then there's two things, you, you have to ask for a complan's own change if. That the designation that you want to apply to the property upon annexation is different from the normal, uh, designations that the chapter includes that. Would are automatically applied to the property. There's a table in the chapter that's, that looks at the complan designation, the county zone that applies to it at the time. And then it assigns an equivalent city zone. So if an applicant wants to change the complan and or. The zone for the property to something different than what would automatically apply through the normal annexation process without a complan's own change. That's when they have to go through this other, you know, change. And so if it was a developing residential area, you know, with a, uh. Marion County UT ten zoning and somebody wanted to, you know, apply for a multifamily zone, that. Does not align with the, the basic equivalent zone that would have, which would be RA. And so since they're asking for a complan's own change. That would be a type four procedure would be coming to the planning commission, you know, for a recommendation as to whether or not that RM two zone. And multifamily complan is appropriate. And then the planning commission would forward their. A recommendation to the council who of course always would take, you know, is the final, you know, decision on annexations, uh, to the city.
Sorry for the pause there. I had slow getting my mute turned off. Um, thank you, Bryce. And any, uh, questions or comments from commissioners? I don't see any. I think we're clear to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the next set of amendments deal with some changes to different chapters of the code that deal with transit service. Uh, so the first one, you know, uh, is, you know, dealing with, you know, when we provide notice to the transit district of development proposals. So we currently have a, an adopted memorandum of understanding between the city and, and, and the Salem area mass transit district chariots. Uh, that, you know, is calls for, you know, better cooperation and, and, and in working together with the transit district to make sure that. Uh, you know, that transit is, you know, needs are met and we can provide transit in a more efficient, you know, in a manner, you know, throughout the city. You know, and that's also important because, you know, we have our Salem project going on. We're trying to, you know, ensure that. Uh, you know, transit is very accessible, you know, to land use, so we can minimize, you know, individual vehicle, vehicle trips and. Help to reduce greenhouse gas. So having a, you know, good communication and cooperation between the city and transit is a good thing. And so part of that. Is we want to make sure that transit is aware of all, uh, you know, development applications. So they're have a chance to comment on them. Uh, when they, uh, and, and provide and, and identify any needs that they may have with that process. And so. Uh, chapter three hundred is proposed to be amended to identify the Salem area mass transit district as an entity that is required to receive, receive notice for type two. Type three and type four land use applications as well as legislative actions like code amendments. So a type two application is like a. A subdivision or a partition or, or a class one or class two adjustment or a class three site plan review. A type three application is an application for like a, a, a zone cha- era, a, a zone change, an applicant initiated zone change. Uh, conditional use permit variance, uh, that type of thing. And then type four are very unique, you know, where they involve, you know. City initiated, you know, mainly the applications where they go from recommendation to the planning commission and then finally, uh. A recommendation from the planning commission to the council. So, but it would be all, all applications, uh, land use applications, transit would receive notice of. And so that'll again help, you know, communicate and, uh, communication between, you know, us and the city and ensure that transit needs are met when development occurs. To make the transit system more robust and, and better serve the community. The second amendment is to add transit centers as a permitted use in the commercial retail zone. Uh, they're currently not allowed in the commercial retail zone and, uh, the transit district is looking, you know, to establish a new, uh, transit center. You know, in the city, uh, in south and southern part, south Salem somewhere. And, uh, one of the zones that is the potential location for that is a CR zone. So we're adding transit centers as a permitted use to the CR zone to facilitate that. Uh, and then, you know, there will be additional changes with our Salem. Uh, when the new MU three and other mixed use zones are allowed to, to allow transit centers, you know, in those, you know, zones as well. Especially when we like to change some of the maybe existing CR zones to like MU three mixed use zones. Uh, we're also requiring, uh, as part of amendments to chapter eight oh three, which is our streets chapter. To require that if, uh, the transit district receives notice of a land use application, you know, for site plan interview or. Uh, partition or a subdivision and there's a, a transit stop that is, you know, adjacent to the property that's existing or planned that. Uh, that we, uh, that we will require, you know, the, the stop to be constructed and or right of way provided for it if it's needed to accommodate it. And that, you know, a re- and it allows us to restrict parking on street and in the area adjacent to that transit stop in order to ensure that the bus. You know, can get in there inadequately, serve that transit stop. And this is all just part of, you know, when streets are built. Um, you have requirements for sidewalks, you have, uh, requirements for landscape strips. Um, you know, these transit, you know, stops and facilities along the streets are, are an essential component of the street and they're really. Um, and, you know, and they're really needed to be provided when streets are being approved. So we can again. Uh, you know, have a transit network that works for the community better, you know, and, and it improves, it improves for the community. And then finally, uh. Oh, I mean, yeah, the last bullet, yeah, requires on street parking in the area, the transit stop to be un- uh, unobstructed. So. So notice to the transit district, uh, allowing transit centers in commercials and commercial retail zones and requiring transit stops and right of way when needed. Accommodate stops when the transit districts then identifies them as being needed.
Uh, we have a one hand raised, uh, Commissioner Pollock. Followed by Commissioner Copcho.
Thank you very much. So, um, just so we know, this is a legislative hearing and the ex parte communication. Does not apply to legislative hearing. That's my understanding and training as a commissioner. So I did talk to transit about this transit, meaning my husband. And, um, what I wanted to make sure that, um. Well, one of the things I've always, uh, gotten kind of ticked out about is making sure transit gets noticed and having them have a voice. Especially on the new developments and maybe like what they predict for the future and getting their. Their organization and their board members involved in, you know, helping us get, you know, service out to the areas. Like in Fairview and all this other stuff like that. Um, but one of the things that I just wanted to cover is that. And my contact with the transit, it was very clear that, that staff members, city staff members, Bryce. And, and transit worked really together on this language. And they really, really like this language and they really wouldn't want any part of this language to be changed, especially with the facilities, which is, um. Section R of the street standards. So. I just want to make sure that it's out there that transit and city staff work really close together and putting this together and they, everybody seems to be on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollock. Uh, next is Commissioner Copcho, followed by Commissioner Slater.
Yeah, uh, again, not too much, but, uh, just to hear myself talk, I guess, uh, and to break up Bryce's, uh, presentation. Uh, just more appreciation, you know, the, I like to see this kind of, uh, thing, the kind of more preventive or. Not preventive, but just pre-positioning, um, knowing that we're gonna need to be doing more of this, knowing that, you know, what's coming down the pike and. Then building out a more transit oriented, uh, city. Um, and so getting out ahead of it, I, I always think is the best way to do it and, and hearing that it was done in tandem with transit. Uh, you know, warms my heart. So, uh, just appreciate that and I'll shut up. So Commissioners Slater can talk.
Perfect segue, Commissioners Slater.
Thank you, Bryce. Slightly unrelated, do, does transit benefit from any of the CDC charges?
Uh, I, 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 uh, that's a good question. I do, I do not have an answer to that. Lisa, would you know? Or the STC charges.
STC, no.
Sorry, I used the wrong phrase there. Yeah, STC charges.
Uh, no, I don't believe that they do.
So the, the construction of, of the actual stop, who pays for that?
That would be, that would be a requirement of the, of the development, you know, just like any other, just like any other, you know, you know, proposal where you have to build streets or, you know, sidewalks and streets. It, it's the construction of this component of the, of necessary component of the public side of the street system.
So the, so chariots basically would communicate to the city that they are looking for a particular kind of structure.
Yes, yeah, they, yeah, they, yep, they have their standards and then they, and the, and the code even says like, you know, in the area as, you know, so it says as prescribed by or as. Identify, as required by the transit district. Can't, I don't see the exact language in front of me, but so it's whatever they prescribe for their standard. And then also the area around the transit stop as well. So, um, you know, you know, they have. They're the ones that have the standards for how much, you know, space you need to have open for on-street parking, you know, to prevent on-street parking to make sure the bus can get in there. So. The transit would, you know, identify the need for the stop and then we would require, you know, based on that, you know, the transit district standards, you know. The, the improvements to, to achieve their goals.
Okay, so they're treated just as the school district is or the fire department is?
Yeah, generally.
Thank you. Thank you. That was it.
Uh, we have one follow-up question from Commissioner Paul.
Um, even, e- even though the developer develops, it's my understanding that afterwards, after they're built, the transit does maintain them. Is that correct? So.
Yes, yeah, no, I, yeah, there would, there wouldn't be a long-term maintenance responsibility for.
Yeah, for the transit department. So they'll keep it clean, any graffiti they take off, you know. Afterwards, the maintenance is transit's responsibility. They just don't build it. Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, that's all the comments that we have.
Okay, rolling on. Uh, so the next one, sorry, I don't have any pictures for this. I don't know if the pictures helped much anyways, but anyway. But so this is just kind of a texty slide and at the table. So we're looking to change the requirements of the CB zone and so. Uh, you know, there's several changes that we're, you know, looking to, you know, to do here, you know, all and all on, you know, the vein of trying to. You know, ensure that the downtown is vibrant and has, you know, good development and good appearing buildings and in the downtown. So the first thing we're doing is. You know, changing a few of the uses, you know, in the zone, not very many. So, you know, right now, today, the CB zone allows single family dwellings. Uh, you know, single family, you know, I don't think single family dwellings are like the, the best ideal, you know, highest and best use of. You know, the downtown, which is supposed to be the urban heart of the city, serving the region. Um, so we're proposing to, you know, not allow single family, you know, dwellings as a permitted use, uh, which they are today. Uh, we're proposing to prohibit drive-through uses in the downtown. Uh, you know, today, uh, you know, yeah, we're proposing to prohibit them. Uh, you know, we're also, commercial parking is a permitted use today. We're proposing to, you know, make that a conditional use and commercial parking, which relates to some. You know, changes, other changes is, you know, today it's a parking lot that is serving and specifically that can serve a specific use to meet its parking requirements. Uh, generally, the intent is the commercial parking is a public parking area that's available for everybody, but the UDC does also allow it to be. A parking area that is being, um, used by a specific use on another site. So if you had your development and you wanted to have, you know. Lease your parking off-site on a, on a property and, uh, you know. Commercial parking is allowed in that zone. You could, you know, lease, you know, spaces in another zone as a commercial parking lot to meet your parking requirement. But we'll be changing commercial parking. You just mean, um, you know, like a pay lot, a public pay lot that's open to every, everybody, not just spaces reserved to a particular. You know, tenant or, or business, uh, self-service storage, you know, currently that is a prohibited use, you know, in the downtown, but. Um, we've had, you know, uh, different entities, you know, coming to the city and urban development expressing a desire to. Redevelop, you know, some of the particularly larger buildings in the downtown, uh, that are sitting vacant and, you know, and it's, and it's because it's hard to find. A user, you know, for those big, you know, vacants, you know, multi-story buildings, uh, based on their, their, their configuration and their size. Uh, you know, we are looking to provide some flexibility in terms of allowing self-service storage with some. Standards to ensure that we don't, you know, create dead zones in the city and the, in the process of allowing self-service storage. And I'll talk about those. You know, in a few minutes here. Um, so those are the changes we're looking to do to uses. Uh, we're also looking to change the, the development standards a bit in the zone. And so. Uh, you know, today, you know, the, there is no, you know, minute, there is no maximum lot coverage. There's no. You know, maximum height limit, you know, all of those things and the setbacks are very minimal. So we're keeping all of those the same. But one thing we're trying to do is we want to ensure that when redevelopment does occur in the downtown, that it's of a density and intensity that is appropriate to the. To the downtown, you know, in, in the CB zone as being the center for, you know, business and commerce and, and residential development in the city, quite frankly. So, uh, and as a servant core. So we're proposing to increase, you know, establish a density requirement, a minimum density requirement for. You know, pure residential development that doesn't exist today. So if you're proposing to do residential development in the downtown, that's purely. So if you're proposing to do residential development in the downtown, that's purely a residential development, we would, we're proposing to have a minimum twenty dwelling unit per acre density requirement, again, to promote that urban level density in the downtown for housing. If, and then also we're introducing, you know, a minimum floor area ratio requirement of two. And so what are two point O? So what floor area ratio is, it's a, it's a measurement of essentially achieving or a way to achieve a minimum level of, you know, density. So if you, with a little bit simpler concept, if we look at a minimum floor area ratio of one, that means essentially you have a, it's a ratio of building area to lot, you know. So if you have your, your a lot that's totally covered by a building, that means, you know, you're, it's a ratio of, you know, one. You know, the lot is hundred percent completely covered by building. You can meet your floor area ratio, you know, by, you know, covering less lot, but you increase in height at the same time. So if you have an FAR of one and you want to, you know, cover half of your lot, you can, you'd have to have a four, you'd have to have a rather a two-story building. And if you wanted to cover a quarter of your lot, you'd have to have a four-story building. So it's a way to achieve a minimum level of development intensity, you know, for, you know, the area of the lot itself. And so like in the downtown, you know, many of the buildings are like two-story, you know, cover a majority of the lot. So we're establishing, you know, a minimum floor area ratio of two. And so if you wanted to, for instance, cover, cover half of your lot, you know, edit with an FAR of two, you'd have to have a minimum, you know, you'd have to have four, you know, essentially four floors of building, you know, covering half of, half of the lot. And that ensures that if we have, you know, buildings in the downtown that are proposed to be, you know, torn down, redeveloped, that we're not, you know, going to be redeveloped with, you know, drive-through coffee stands and 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 low-density development. We still want to make, maintain the downtown as the the center for the city, urban center for the city. So those are where those are coming from. And then along with that, too, we want to ensure that, you know, when redevelopment occurs, that we have, you know, buildings that are up to the street framing the public right-of-way. And so we're proposing to introduce a building frontage standard. We have building frontage standards in our, in many of our overlay zones. But in the downtown, we want, we're proposing a ninety-five percent, you know, frontage, meaning that, you know, the the amount of building, you know, along the frontage of the, the street frontage of the lot, ninety-five percent of that frontage, street frontage has to be occupied by buildings at the setback line. And so the ninety-five percent would apply to the primary street, which is an arterial, an arterial, an arterial street. And then for streets that are not primary streets or on corner lots, you know, for instance, if you had like Center Street and Commercial Street on a corner lot there, the primary street, that could be able to choose which one, you know, but one you'd have to have ninety-five percent and the other one you could have, you know, seventy-five percent, so a little bit less, you know, to in order to address, you know, needs for getting a driveway in for access and everything on the side. So along with this, today we have, the CB zone has two main overlay zones that apply to it. The general retail office overlay zone and the front street overlay zone. Because, you know, we're generally trying, you know, you know, there's direction of the council, you know, you know, we want to see less overlay zones and the overlay zones create additional layers of complexity. So we're trying, we try to eliminate overlay zones whenever we can. So in the downtown, instead of maintaining the general retail office overlay zone and the front street overlay zone as they exist today with their designer view standards that apply, you know, in the downtown, we were proposing to eliminate those overlay zones altogether and then to take those design standards from those overlay zones, put them into the CB zone. So if you're developing in the CB zone, you'll have, you know, you have your, your standards, you know, your setbacks, your lot coverage, your height, floor area ratio, density requirement, street frontage, and then there's also a section that that says, that talks about design. And it's important to point out that these are not, you know, design review standards anymore. These are just design standards. So, you know, these design review standards aren't subject to a designer view under chapter two twenty-five, which, you know, would, if you had, if you didn't meet them, you'd come to the, you know, you'd have to go through the guidelines and have to go through a public hearing. These are just standards that are design-related and if you don't meet them, you can ask for an adjustment to them, to deviate from them. And so, but again, they're the same standards, design standards from the overlay zone that are being placed in the, or those two overlay zones that are being placed into the zone. And we've also, you know, taken some from the MU one and the MU two zones that Unis had worked on, you know, on State Street. And we've applied them, you know, here to enhance, you know, the requirements for ensuring good building design in the downtown. And then finally, getting back to that, the special use standards for self-service storage in an existing building. So in order to, again, provide that flexibility to allow, you know, some, you know, use of these vacant buildings, you know, that are very deep, you know, oftentimes cover, can cover like an entire, you know, an entire, you know, half of a block or a large portion of a block. And they have space in them that unless it's the original tenant that was specifically designed for that purpose, you know, it's somewhat, you know, difficult to find a user for. We're, we're proposing to allow self-service storage in the buildings, but we have limits that are proposed to be assigned to that use under chapter seven hundred, which is a special use chapter. So basically, we, the standards are trying to, you know, you know, ensure that we don't have dead spaces on the street level. And so in terms of where this self-service storage would be allowed within the building, it would be allowed in a basement. You know, it would be, it can be allowed on the second floor or above, you know, in existing buildings, but it couldn't be located on the ground floor. The only type of, you know, ground floor activity that would be allowed associated with the use would be any office space or other customer service space, leasing office or customer service space that the rental facility might have on the ground floor with a street, you know, presence. Or and then also, you know, we need to have a way for, they need to have a way to get access to loading docks and and loading areas, you know, to get the, you know, storage, you know, items up to the, you know, the second floors or the basement. So and then there's limits in terms of where that storage can be located on the ground floor or not storage, where the loading area can be located on the ground floor, it has to be in the, in the rear of the building and not occupying any portion of the, the, the floor area of the building that's next to a street. So it really is all about, you know, maintaining, you know, active use on the ground floor and then, you know, ensuring that any, anything that occurs on the ground floor, you know, associated with the use that is allowed, it's minimized. And then giving more flexibility to have the storage on the upper floors. And this applies to existing buildings only that existed on, that exists on the day of the ordinance when it's adopted. It doesn't apply within the downtown historic district. So that would just be outside of the, in the CB zone, outside of the downtown historic district in existing buildings. We do allow for some flexibility to add additional building floors to the building. You know, first let me say, you know, and you only get to have fifty percent of the building area as well, you know, you only get fifty percent, you know, of the total building area that can be dedicated to the storage. And again, you can't have any of it on the ground floor. So beyond that fifty percent, if 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 additional floors were intended to be added, you know, they could, you could do that and you could have storage in the new floors you're adding beyond the fifty percent maximum that would apply. But any new floors you added with storage would have to be surrounded by non-storage use, you know, for all street, all face, all portions of the building that face the street. So essentially, we want to make sure that if you're adding new floors, one or two floors onto the building and you want to use those for storage as well, that you have to wrap it with a use as other than storage facing the street. So essentially, you wouldn't know that the storage, you know, is there, that the the perimeter non-storage use requirement wouldn't apply to a portion of the floor area of the building that faces a, an interior side property line, an interior rear property line or an alley. But again, it would be required on the, on all of the portions of the building facade that face the street. So again, you don't have the, you don't have the, you wouldn't even know that the storage is there because it's wrapped by other uses such as residential units. So if a person wanted to take a new, an existing building, you know, use the second floor for storage, add more floors onto it, wrap it with residential units, but have a core of storage in the middle to serve those dwelling units, that would be a possibility. And then addition, in addition to that, we have a section that says that you cannot make any changes to the exterior appearance of the building that would take it out of, would make it non-conforming or make it's or increases degree of non-conformance with the design standards of the zone that deal with building articulation, building entries, weather protection or ground floor and upper floor windows. So the idea is you can go into the building, but you can't make, can't make any changes to it, but it's going to make it look worse and take it out, you know, more, you know, out of alignment with the the standards that we want to have for the buildings in the downtown in terms of, you know, how they're broken up en masse, you know, how they went, you know, where the, where the windows are located, how much windows they have. So give that, we provide the flexibility, but then still maintain control to an appearance of the building to ensure that when we have an active street environment still with uses other than storage on the ground floor, but then also the building, you know, maintains an appearance that suit, you know, compatible and consistent with other buildings in the downtown.
Thank you, Bryce. I will, I have a comment or a couple of questions and I will go at the end. I see Commissioner Slater has his hand up.
Great, thank you. So I think most of these changes are very good and I appreciate the work that's being done here. The changes that I'm less enthusiastic about probably don't really matter. One question to note is, is it looks like we're going to establish a minimum building height of two floors. And given, given the width of our streets downtown and kind of all the research that's telling us that downtown streets perform well when there's a clear building envelope and edge to those streets, is there a way that we can move that from two floors to three or even four floors? I think that would result in a much better kind of cohesive downtown feel for pedestrians and is in alignment with some of the work that's been done recently, including both the streetscapes and the city's willingness to invest funds to increase floor height and new developments downtown.
Yeah, that, you know, the, 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 the level or the, the intensity level can be established whether or not. That's just like saying it's a minimum of, you know, maybe it's a minimum of three stories, you know, or more, you know. You know, one of the questions, you know, for a site, you know, if if the floor area ratio is, is a two and and you maybe perhaps want to, you know, provide parking, you know, on, you know, maybe a service parking lot behind the building in some fashion. So you're not going to cover again the full, you know, the full amount of the lot with building that, and if you see, once you pull it back, now you're having to add, add stories. So like the FAR two, you know, if you wanted again, cover half of your building with, you know, or half of your lot with building, that would mean you'd have to have a four, a four-story building. So we, the FAR does, you know, so when you shrink the building in terms of its overall coverage of the lot, you have to increase in height. And then at the same time, we are maintaining, you know, we have the ninety-five percent frontage, building frontage requirement along the primary street and then it's on a corner seventy-five percent on the secondary. So I think, you know, you, by having the building frontage requirement to mean, you know, maintain the amount of building street face that's being addressed by the development. And then, you know, if they want to reduce the overall coverage and go taller, because I think, you know, what you would, you'll find is that for some of those buildings and like the Nordstrom's building or the JCPenney's building, you know, as soon as there's like a minimum depth that I think you, you, that you get back from the street, that the space really just, you know, kind of becomes not so much usable and it would just be dedicated to storage anyways, you know, there's maybe, I don't know, like, you know, sixty, seventy, maybe at the most, you know, depth that you might have with the development, you know, for a commercial development. So the space in the back becomes less valuable. So if if that is less valuable and you use it for like parking in the middle that's obscured and you can't see it because it's behind the building and you go taller, I think we can, you can get there to the same, you're getting to that urban density level. If we were to, if we were to say like a floor area ratio level of three or like four, just like four right off the bat, as soon as you wanted to pull the bill, you know, the building back, you know, then you, then you're looking at like an eight-story, you know, building. And so there, you know, there need to be some, you know, careful consideration, you know, and, you know, and I don't know, maybe, you know, floor area ratio is one way to do it. But if, you know, maybe a more direct way to do would be just establish a minimum building height, you know, instead of just trying to get to the building height through the FAR two.
Right, right. I mean, it seems to me that it would provide the developer more flexibility if it's done through a minimum building height than through the FAR. I mean, the FAR seems more restrictive and forces them to potentially go even higher if they're not dealing, if, if they need to accommodate parking or other structures. I, I, I'm looking at your table here and it, and you, it does look like you created a minimum. The table says minimum two stories.
Oh, yeah, yes, that, that is true. Yeah, minimum, yeah, that, yeah, that is very, yeah, very true. That is correct.
So, so I guess my feedback would be, I would like to see that minimum go potentially to three or three floors if possible, even if, even if we don't have to change the FAR. Just so we can get that building edge, that urban edge on the street up a little higher and provide a little bit more of a sense of enclosure in our large downtown streets, or actually large or wide downtown streets. That would be my feedback.
Okay, you know, those are good comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Copse has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to real quick echo Commissioner Slater in the same, I've actually talked to a number of business owners just in my going to get coffee at the Gov Cup or going to get books at the Book Ben and so on and so forth. And they've, they've actually asked me about, well, you know, how come there's not a, you know, more apartments over these buildings like a real city? You know, on, on top of things and talking about the urban edge and just walking through the urban corridor having it feel like, quote, a real city and hearing that from, you know, business owners and people downtown. And I think, you know, to Commissioner Slater's very good point, establishing that height would really make it, quote, feel that way. So I think that definitely be something interesting to consider.
I don't see any of the hands raised right now. So I'll take this opportunity to ask the questions that I had. Going to the changes in use, the commercial parking as a conditional use. I always have to chew on these, so I, I may come to an epiphany tomorrow on this and and maybe change my opinion, but in my initial reaction is that I think that could be problematic and I would, I would ask where staff was, was thinking of how this would be beneficial. And the reason that I would, I'm asking that is we've been talking about reducing parking standards for a lot of uses. And so in doing that, we're putting potential more car heat. And theoretically, there are some people that are currently younger than most of us that will choose not to purchase a vehicle, but that's decades down the road. And and even those that don't, their spouses or family members will have vehicles and they'll drive those into downtown. And so if we have a bunch of downtown that doesn't have parking standards, it seems counterintuitive to me that developer would have to go through a conditional use process to put like a private parking structure, like let's say Smart Park wants to come to Salem and put a parcade in. I've, I've had comments from lots of folks in the community that it seems like our downtown, a part of our issue with parking, like street parking, is that we actually just don't have another parking structure to absorb some of that volume of parking as our downtown continues to become more vibrant and and more intense in use. So Bryce, is there, was there some thought behind making a condition, sorry, commercial parking a conditional use?
That the, the idea with it here and then like in other areas where we've, you know, in other sections of this amendment, we've, we're proposing to like just get rid of commercial parking altogether in the residential zones, for instance, it's transitional uses, but in like in Edgewater Street, second street mixed use, you know, zones, I guess, you know, we, we don't want to have in the downtown necessarily, you know, just, you know, land being taken up by, you know, commercial parking lots. So, you know, it not, you know, it doesn't outright prohibit it, but it does, you know, put it through a process. So, you know, the conditioning process gives the benefit of, you know, if there's conditions, you know, that, you know, to help it, help fit the use to its specific area of the downtown, you know, there, there are some benefits, you know, with that. You know, but I think the general idea is, you know, we, you know, want, not wanting to, you know, you know, use up land, valuable land in the downtown with, you know, with commercial, you know, commercial parking lots or invaluable land and mixed use strips or corridors, you know, wanting to try to promote, you know, building use. But, but yeah, your point is taken though in terms of when, if parking standards are reduced and the market is, you know, is demanding or is requiring, you know, to be successful, some amount maybe of parking, you know, and if it's harder, if it's a condition use permit, does that discourage that from happening? That point is taken. We'll take.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, I, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm thinking that it's, and there's a gentleman that I work with up in the Portland market that his business is solely commercial parking structures. And of developers, those guys seem to be the most conservative and the most hesitant to start a development because a parking structure is so expensive. And and there seems to be a fairly high level of risk on them. And so I, I feel like, boy, if we add that to the conditional use instead of an outright allowed use, then we're gonna maybe. Um, then we're gonna uh maybe. Make it too difficult to actually get the parking that we need in downtown. And then uh listening to, I guess, as a follow up to that comment is that listening to um some of the other. Uh, uh, changes that you've presented. It, it sounds like if somebody wanted to do a parking structure in the downtown. That uh, they would actually have better success if the parking structure was lined with shops and apartments on the outside. And the parking structure was on the inside. Um, which would also look aesthetically awesome. And uh, if that was uh public parking as well as uh resident parking. Um, that I think would uh resolve that issue. But um, the other comment that I had uh was about the minimum uh residential development. Density and uh the twenty dwelling units per acre um. Uh, uh echoes, I think, the development standard um that we were talking about. Um, in the, the last work session on uh larger uh subdivisions. And um, the twenty dwelling units per acre um. Uh, in downtown, I'm, I'm thinking about, well, if somebody redeveloped the Nordstrom building. Um, ah, boy, that's not sitting on uh an acre site. And so if their minimum was twenty units per acre, um, there, the minimum for that building would be. Pretty low for such a large building. And so I'm, I'm, I'm almost wondering if there's an opportunity to have a, a higher minimum standard. In the central business district. Um, so that we ensure that uh somebody puts, you know, like on the Nordstrom building. Um, more than like ten units that they, that they are able to put like twenty or thirty units in there um as far as a minimum standard. Um, more just a comment for food for thought.
Oh, yeah, that's a very good, very good, you know, twenty, yeah, twenty could be, you know, could be low. And if there is, yeah, there, if there's to, there could, that could be increased.
Um, so I do see a hand raised uh that from Commissioner Slater.
Thanks. So just following up on the current conversation, Bryce, the, the twenty unit. Um, density, minimum density requirement is, is it, is for resident, exclusively residential. Right, not mixed use?
Yeah, you know, you know, yeah, correct. Yeah, you know, the idea, you know, is. We don't.
So in the Nordstrom's example, though, that would be a mixed use, that presumably.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, and I, yeah, we're not, not sure in terms of what that might be. But, you know, it could very, if it, if it was, you know, mixed use, yeah, that you would not have this, you know, twenty dwelling in this breaker. If it was a standalone, you know, multi, you know, multifamily development, development. And we have, we have a definition for mixed use in our, in our code too. And, and it requires that a certain percentage of the ground floor, you know, be occupied, you know, by non-residential uses. And so uh. In a, I think a seventy percent of the ground floor has to be occupied by uses other than uh, or non-residential uses. And then the upper floors can are residential. Uh, but yeah, and you're right, if it's a mixed use building, it would not, this would not be subject to that. We just want to, I think if we get, if we got a mixed use, if we get mixed use, you know, in the, in the downtown, we don't wanna necessarily. You know, kill, you know, discourage a mixed use building from coming in by having, I guess, a density that's maybe too high. But again, if we're just gonna have peer development and the, you know, residential development in the downtown. We wanna make sure that it is of a, you know, of a density of at least twenty, maybe twenty is not the right number. But I think in terms of deciding not to place the dense, minimum density on mixed uses to, you know, not um have a situation where you have a. A site that like is proposed to be redeveloped and, and discouraging it because of the, the, you know, the density in a way. It's like if we can get a mixed use building with, you know, you know, some, um, some amount of residential dwelling units in it, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a win. Uh, rather than maybe scaring a project off by having maybe too high of a minimum density for mixed use.
So my, my second and final question on this one is um, commercial parking, are we talking? Are we distinguishing between a surface parking lot and a structure?
No, at this point, it's just commercial parking in general is, is, you know, structure or uh surface parking lot would be conditional.
I, I see those two things as very, very different in terms of the efficiency of the land use.
Yeah, very true.
So uh, I would have no problem prohibiting or making it a conditional use for a surface parking lot. Um, I don't know if that would be the case, if someone wanted to actually invest in a struc, in a structure there, multi-floor structure there. I, you know, I know that our long-term hope here is that car use and single vehicle car use decreases. Uh, but there's a transition point here. And we're not quite there yet. Um, so I don't know if I would want to discourage someone from putting in a multi-floor parking lot. Parking structure at this point.
Okay, yeah.
I'll just flag that.
And, and, and in other zones, you know, like the, if I recall, in the mixed use one and then M U two zone on State Street. I think we, you know, we prohibit, um, we, we don't, we just don't allow like, you know, surface parking lots. We do permit structures. So I think, yeah, that would be, that's a, you know, a good suggestion, I think.
Thank you. That was it for me.
I don't see any other hands raised and I do appreciate uh Commissioner Slater's clarification. I was, I was envisioning uh, uh, mixed use building um related to the twenty dwelling units per acre. Um, I was not envisioning uh something like the new um micro apartment development that is. Uh, well, I guess that's actually a mixed use, so that's probably a bad example. But theoretically, if somebody was to build just apartments, that, that actually puts a little bit different perspective on things. Um, I don't see any further hands raised, so if everybody's okay, we'll proceed to the next item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so this next set of changes deals with the Fairview mixed use zone. And so uh, the Fairview mixed use zone uh has been around for some time now. Had, you know, adopted in, you know, two thousand three, I believe, F, you know, not long after I got here. But um, and, you know, in two thousand five, there was a master plan that was adopted called the Fairview. You know, redevelopment master plan or the Fairview plan. And then subsequent, subsequent to that, there have been refinement plans that have been adopted that further implement that, that Fairview plan. And uh, and early the zone establishes a master plan process. And the first step was that Fairview plan, the Fairview plan, you know, at the time, you know, it was, there was, there was site planning. And, 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 and thought that went into it, of course. Uh, but as we've, but, but applied the zone and had refinement plans come in over the years. Um, you know, it's been the case that more likely than not, that the refinement plans have deviated from the, the Fairview plan to a degree. You know, and, and as long, but they've still been, they've still met the sustainable principles of the plan. But they don't exactly look, you know, a hundred percent like what was shown in that Fairview plan document. And, and I, I recall, you know, Sam Hall, one of the original members of Sustainable Fairview Associates, you know, always saying that, you know. That the drawings in there were illustrative plans, you know, they weren't, you know, actual like the, the, the layout that is proposed for the development. And so um, this, this series of proposed amendments is, is, is being brought forward because of the result of uh refinement plan. Which was the Fairview Woods, you know, refinement plan that was approved by the planning commission, appealed to the city council. And then ultimately approved, and approved by the city council and then further appealed to Luba. And Luba, you know, in that appeal, they, you know, reviewed it and said essentially that, you know, the city, you know, approval of that refinement plan, you know, was incorrect. And it didn't meet the criteria. And so, um, you know, this is trying to, you know, address that issue of, and, and to, to make it, to allow further refinement plans. To be developed in Fairview and not have the same potential, you know, issue of getting appealed to Luba and, and being overturned. That we had in the Fairview Woods refinement plan case. And so what we're trying to do with this series of amendments is to, you know, clarify what the Fairview plan is. Uh, you know, in, 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 describe it as kind of what it, what it is. It's a conceptual master plan. It identifies goals and policies for the development of the property. But those goals and policies are further implemented and refined by the actual refinement plans that come in for the specific. You know, portions of the property for further development. And it's those refinement plans that establish, you know, the zoning, you know, essentially the, the, the many zoning districts that apply to those chunks of the Fairview site. Uh, that the Fairview plan applies to in that area. So uh, we are, we're clarifying a number of things based on the Luba decision. Um, you know, the relationship between the refinement plans and the Fairview plan. And getting that a, the Fairview plan and, and adopted, an adoption of a refinement plan in and of itself is an amendment to the Fairview plan. Because that was one of the issues that came up at the Luba appeal is what, is that the appellant indicated that the Fairview plan needed to be amended. Before the refinement plan can be approved. But even in the original version of the code prior to the U D C, it was stated that, you know, the refinement plan approval was an amendment to the Fairview plan. We took that out, you know, when we did the U D C, but um, thinking that it was not necessarily needed. But, you know, now with the Luba appeal, it does make it more clear that it, you know, that it, that a refinement plan, it needs to be specified. That it is in a, in an episode is an amendment to that Fairview plan document. And the other thing, you know, really, there was an issue with the Luba appeal is, you know, analysis of whether or not the, the refinement plan was consistent. You know, with the Fairview plan and, and Luba really interpreted the, the consistency standard, you know, to be exactly, you know, essentially. You know, what the refinement plan says and what it looks like in terms of the drawings and the graphics. And so uh, we've, you know, proposed amendments to make it clear that in the approval of a refinement plan. That the criteria is that the refinement plan has to substantially conform to the Fairview Training Center Master Plan Document, which is this document here. It's the main, you know, component of the master plan. And that the, all the drawings and the graphics included in that are illustrative and maybe further refined by the refinement plan. Um, you know, found to be in substantial conformance with the, the thirteen sustainable principles of the plan. Uh, so, and then it, then there's other things in here when the Luba decision that they interpreted. That, you know, any, any development in Fairview that resulted in a change in the, the development concepts of the plan. Instead of, you know, just being like a site-specific zoning adjustment or variance, it required an amendment to the plan itself. And so we're making it clear who can initiate amendments to the plan. You know, we've, you know, made it clear that, um, that if you're go, if you're come, if you're developing in an area of a refinement plan. And you want to, you know, deviate from, you know, the established setback of the refinement plan for that property. That you don't need an amendment to the refinement plan to do that. It's a variance or an adjustment like any other development in the city that is looking for a site-specific deviation, you know, from a standard in a, in a zone. So we've done that. And so hopefully with that, you know, that will pave the way for uh further development of the, you know, Fairview site. Uh, and then in a manner that, and, and as, as we've applied refinement plans in the past, consistent with that approach. And then ensure that uh we hopefully don't have an issue where, where a decision is made that is reversed, you know, by Luba.
Well, thank you, Bryce. Um, that one uh received no raised hands. Give everyone just another second to chew that over. Seeing none. Oh, nope, nope. Commissioner Pollock.
I just wanna say thank you for, for, this actually is, this complication. That was created here is, is caused problems for us. And so I'm really glad that it's being uh cleaned up. And yeah, there's, there was always a problem with what the, you know, conceptual and goals and policies. Just like, you know, just like the um goals and policies of, of a neighborhood association. We have to consider them, but they're not like, they're not like sent and so on, they actually have to be, you know, done. So um, you know, I'm glad that you're, that this, especially in Fairview and just, that's supposed to be, supposed to be a shining star on mixed use. So I thank you for doing this. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollock. Seeing no further hands raised. Let's proceed.
Uh, so the next is set of amendments is very easy, you know, it's just a set of amendments to the airport overlay zone. Uh, which regulates height of structures within different FAA part seventy-seven airspace surfaces. Uh, to ensure that, you know, any development that occurs isn't a hazard to air uh navigation or navigation. And so these amendments have been identified by the airport administrator as being necessary. And they update, you know, the chapter to uh conform to the latest, you know, terminology and requirements for those FAA uh surfaces.
That's it?
Yeah, well, you know, so you just, so everybody can, so maybe a little bit of that. So, you know, the FAA seventy-seven, part seventy-seven services, they, they're a three-dimensional type of surface. For instance, on this graphic here, you have the runway, which is in black. And then you have, you know, the transitional surfaces that go up and out at a designated slope from, you know, the runways, you know, all, all. Four, four points are into the runways here. And then those go up and out, you know, and, you know, at that slope until they hit, you know, the horizontal surface area, which is this large, you know. Uh, area that's three hundred and sixty feet above uh mean sea level or two hundred and ten feet above the airport. Or uh, or, you know, the certain distance above the airport elevation. And then from the edges of the runway, you have these transitional surfaces. And so they're all, these are all planes that are going up and out. Uh, and it's the ones from the edge of the runway, they're going up and out from the ground. Uh, to a certain elevation and then they all intersect with the horizontal surface at three sixty feet above mean sea level. And then from the horizontal surface, they go up and out at a, at a, at a different slope, you know. And so it's all about, you know, this three-dimensional area, you know, for, that you need to make sure that there aren't any things, any buildings or structures or vegetative growths. Above those height limits, because if so, they're creating an, an issue for uh, you know, air travel and air navigation around the airport. Uh, so uh, there were some issue, the, the airport administrator wanted some changes to the terminology, you know, the chapter, you know, some of the, you know, some of the language in there. Didn't, you know, align with kind of the, the professional, you know, standards that, you know, people associated with airports technically use. So that's been done and, and some of the bigger changes, you know, are the, the most significant, they're not huge, but the ones deal with like the approach services. In terms of, you know, changing the terminology of those. Uh, so not, it's a lot of it's just cleaning up the language, no, no huge, you know, changes in this chapter.
Okay, uh, one hand raised and that is Commissioner Slater.
Very, very quickly, Bryce, does the, do the airport height limits have any impact on the downtown pipe development?
Uh, no, the downtown is so, the downtown is so, you know, the elevation of the downtown and those are so high at that point. You know, there, yeah, there, you know, there is, you know, some consideration, but you know, three sixty feet above mean sea level is generally, you know, uh, you know. Enough room to accommodate, you know, whatever, you know, development density that the city is experiencing.
We can have five, six floor downtown.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, that, that was my question. Thank you.
No, Salem Hospital, when that was done there, you know, we, yeah, that was reviewed and, you know, I can't remember exactly how close that is, you know. But, but yeah, the airport reviewed that and it wasn't an issue. But yes, you, yeah, in the downtown four, five and six, that's, that is, that is, yeah, not gonna be an issue.
That was it.
Thank you, Commissioners Slater. I don't see any other hands raised. I'll give it one more second. Let's proceed.
Okay, so uh, next one is a, a, a pretty substantial set of amendments. And this deals with um how the city, giving the city an additional tool to help deal with the homeless issue that we're having in the city. Uh, you know, and it's consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing, you know, throughout, you know, the, the Northwest and, you know, throughout the, the country. You know, so in, in those situations where there aren't enough shelter beds, you know, in actual, uh, you know, homeless shelters or facilities. Where there are, uh, you know, where there's, you know, for instance, running water and, and more, you know, permanent, you know, types of sanitation facilities. Instead of just having, you know, homeless individuals, you know, left on to this, on the streets or, or in unmanaged situations, you know, and along public rights of way. Or in, you know, or in, you know, open space areas, you know, is the idea that you go towards these managed facilities or managed sites. Where they're managed by a nonprofit or a housing authority or a local government. Or a, a nonprofit that's operating with, you know, with any of those other entities that has experience operating uh emergency shelters. And it's, they're intended to provide a place, you know, where uh homeless individuals can have, be in a secure setting. Where they can have access, consistent access to uh sanitation facilities such as restrooms, hand washing facilities. Uh, shower facilities, uh, case management, counseling services, health checkups. All things that are kind of important to help individuals out of the cycle of homelessness, homelessnessness, you know. And, and to have some sense of dignity and respect and hopefully, you know, get them in, out of that cycle and then on to more stable. Housing in the situations, you know, as time goes on. So in order to do that, uh, we're proposing to allow uh managed temporary camping. And uh, there's, in a managed temporary camping areas again, where, you know, it's, it's a type of temporary living accommodations. Provided to people that are experiencing homelessness. And it can be provided in a number of forms, it can be provided, the shelter can be provided in the term, in forms of micro shelters. Such as the pallet houses that the, or the pallet homes or pallet structures that the city is utilizing. You know, on, for instance, on the Portland Fairground Road property where there's um, that's a, a shelter similar to this established under the emergency or operation. Or the emergency, emergency declaration the city managers declared. Or it could be tents or it could be vehicles or any combination of tents, vehicles and micro shelters up to a maximum total of thirty. And of those thirty structures, you could have, you know, a maximum of two adults in a tent, two adults in a micro shelter. And a vehicle is a little bit different because it may be a family that's living in that vehicle. So, I mean, you could have, you could have a family living in a vehicle or no more than unrelated, uh, two unrelated people living in a vehicle. So, so there's limits on terms of how many. So it's so there's limits on terms of how many, you know, people can be within the facility and the number of, you know, campsites or camp shelter units that can be allowed. Uh, in order, in a, in order to address the need, we're proposing to allow it, you know, broadly throughout the city in all zones, uh, including the residential zone, but within the residential zone restricted to, you know, those properties that are operated by a, uh, and a religious assembly use. Uh, in terms of how they would be allowed, in terms of the approval process. If you're located, if a church were to operate in a residential zone and wanted to have, you know, one of these sites with either tents, vehicles or or microstructures, they would have to go through a class two temporary use permit. That class two temporary use permit requires public notice, you know, to surrounding property owners. And there's an ability to appeal that uh, decision to the hearings officer. Uh, and then, so that's regardless of the number of micro, or, you know, camp units you're providing. And the camp units are again, a shelter, you know, the tent, shelter that's a vehicle or shelter that's a, a micro, microstructure. So regardless of the number you want to provide up to thirty, the maximum of thirty, you have to do, you know, we have to go through the the notice process uh, to surrounding property owners. And there would be an option to appeal that if the decision didn't meet the criteria. Outside of residential zones, you know, you could have again up to thirty maximum, you know, shelter units. Uh, and then provided if you're, you know, ten or fewer, you wouldn't have to go through the type two process. You could just, you know, go through a type one temporary use permit, which is just a staff decision with no notice or appeal. And again, that would be ten maximum shelter units and then two people per unit. If you're over ten, you would have to go through the, the, the public review process of a class two temporary use permit. And there's also a different set of standards that apply for each. So if you're only doing ten or fewer, um, you're, you're always for all, all of these facilities, you have to have a minimum of, uh, two restrooms, you know, a place to store, uh, you know, personal belongings of the residents. Uh, and then garbage, you know, garbage and waste management, dark good, you know, dumpsters and and waste management and then in security and supervision, you know, if you're more than than ten units or ten shelter units, then it's some additional services, you know, come into play in addition to the ones, you know, that were just discussed. Those include having, you know, you know, shower facilities, you know, eating, you know, and, you know, eating kitchen and food prep and eating areas, you know, and community gathering areas. And so there is additional, you know, facilities that are required for the, the, the bigger, you know, uh, or the larger number of shelter units. Uh, they're all, it's all designed to provide a, you know, a way for, you know, the homeless again to have a more secure area to live. It's not on the streets, it's in a managed environment, um, you know, with supervision and, you know, and security and other requirements, you know, with waste disposal, uh, you know, pest management and all the, and all the other things that would be needed to operate these facilities in a manner that not only helps the residents, but then, uh, you know, get them off hopefully out of the cycle of homelessness, but also, you know, minimizes, you know, and impacts to surrounding, you know, properties. And so currently we're, you know, we're allowing these types of facilities under an emergency declaration uh, by the city manager due to COVID nineteen and this kind of ongoing pandemic situation. Uh, but the idea is to, you know, allow this in the code. So, you know, we don't have to always be operating under an emergency situation and and have standards that are in the code to address it.
Thank you, Bryce. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? We have none. I think this is phenomenal. I think this is long overdue. Um, and a part of the, the fact that we have housing crisis um, is is a result of the fact that we didn't have, uh, the ability for, uh, uh, public private partnerships like this to occur, um, normally in as maybe, uh, looking at a, a bright spot of, uh, the global pandemic. It forced, uh, societies to relook at things like this and come up with a better solution. I think this is, um, like I said, long overdue. No comments.
So the other aspect of this is warming shelters and other use that obviously, you know, we do need to have as a city. It's, it performs an essential function. You know, for individuals when it's, uh, when temperatures are cold and and are a danger to health and safety. Uh, you know, we don't have a provision in the code that really deals with, you know, how homeless shelters are allowed. So uh, we're proposing to allow not homeless shelters, but warming shelters rather. Uh, so we're proposing to add a provision to the code, you know, similar to the, you know, the, the other micro camp or the managed camping areas as a temporary use permit, but it's class one temporary use permit that allows, um, in the, the shelter operators to come in and get a class one temporary use permit to operate. Um, you know, and they're a warming, you know, shelter when it's needed during the months of the year when temperatures are cold and a danger to health and, you know, health and safety. Again, they currently, when there's conditions, you know, that are, that are dangerous, we, you know, they get allowed, you know, but in often, you know, if they're under the emergency order, they're under the emergency order, but sometimes they just, we just have to, they just are allowed. And so we want to provide a legal mechanism for these types of uses to be allowed when needed.
I'm just curious, uh, what is the staff's, um, uh, interpretation of the term temporary in this situation?
It's it's during, well, it's during the months of the year. We, we, we do set a timeframe in the ordinance. It's from, I, uh, I don't, since I'm sharing my screen, I don't have that in front of me right now, but it's, you know, from the fall to, you know, early, you know, kind of, you know, late winter, you know, when temperature, you know, that's, that's, that you you get operated for the year, you know, during that, that period of time when temperatures are cold. So you get your temporary use permit, you can operate it, you know, at any time, you know, during that window of the year that is needed.
And we've got two hands raised. Sorry, guys, I did not have my participants' window up, so I don't know who raised their hand first. I'm gonna go in alphabetical order. So Commissioner Cop Show followed by Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Bryce, is there any consideration? I'm looking at the language here and I don't, I don't have it in front of me on, on paper form. Um, the, um, on operating emergency shelters, does that include if we were to create um, clean air shelters?
Um, yeah, we, that's that, that is one thing we need to address. Thank you for bringing that up. You know, Gretchen Bennett and the city manager's office had, you know, commented on that and I, and I just hadn't had a chance to, to retool this to kind of deal with just like more climate, you know, kind of climate related structures, smoke quality, uh, even like it's not just warming, what about, you know, cooling, you know, cooling centers? You know, so it's, uh, they know, yeah, very, very good point. Yeah, this needs to be amended, you know, to address, you know, not, not, not just shelters of warming, but, you know, shelters for other, you know, kind of environmental or or, uh, climate related issue, you know, things.
Right. Yeah. And you hit the nail on the head with the, the cooling, because, you know, um, I don't hope that we continue to have hundred and seventeen degree, two degree days. Um, but, you know, my hopes, uh, are not taken into account by Mother Nature. Uh, so, um, the best we can do is plan. Um, and I would assume that i- if we were to draft those in uh, similar to the warming shelters, there would be kind of a month window, um, you know, through the summer timeframe or through wildfire season timeframe, whatever that happens to be for, you know, smoker or.
Yeah, it's, it's easy for the, it's easy for the cold weather generally, but the smoke and yeah, you know, so yeah, so take it, it'll take a little bit of time, but yes, when this comes back to you, it will be a more broadly, you know, uh, function, you know, functioning filter ordinance.
Got it.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, I like it. Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Slater.
Thank you. My question was about cooling shelters, so I think that's been answered.
Very good. Yeah, very good. I wish I had 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 the time to get this, you know, amended so to met your, met your needs. But yes, that we were gonna be doing that, so.
Great. I'm glad it'll be included. Thanks.
That is all the comments we have on this one.
Okay. So I think we're getting close. Uh, we're getting close. Uh, so this, this couple here in general development standards chapter that, you know, establishes just basic standards that apply to generally all development outside of zones. Uh, so today, if you're gonna do a townhouse or a zero, a townhouse which is attached to another unit at the property line, like shown in the image here. Uh, if you're doing it in a single family residential zone, it's a special use and it requires as part of the special use standards that you have to have a maintenance, maintenance agreement or an easement, you know, on the neighboring property to allow, you know, maintenance of your, of your walls that are associated in in your facilities in the wall for your, you know, townhouse unit. That's a requirement for, uh, you know, only in the residential zones where it's, where it's allowed as a special use. Outside of, you know, it not being allowed as a special use, but just allow, allowed outright, like in the multifamily zone, we don't have any standard that says you have to have a maintenance agreement along the property line for any uh, townhouse or, you know, you could do zero side yard too, where you have one dwelling unit that's built contiguous to the, to the property line. Uh, but not, but not actually attached to another. So anytime where a unit is built, is built on the property line, regardless if it's a special use or not, and you need to have a requirement to have a maintenance easement, you know, so we're proposing to add to the special or the general development standards chapter, you know, a requirement that any dwelling unit that's constructed contiguous to a property line have a, uh, maintenance agreement. So that's that one. And then the other one is, you know, we had an issue that came up with, um, the I can't remember if it's PG or Salem Electric, but I think it might have been Salem Electric. They wanted to, uh, you know, more about revise a fence around their substation and, um, our code doesn't allow, you know, the provision of barbed wire fencing around, you know, the, the, uh, the substation for security, you know, we only allow barbed wire fencing around, you know, livestock, you know, essentially, and correctional institutions. So we're proposing to, you know, allow, uh, barbed wire fencing to be used to enclose electric substations. Um, and this is something that's, the, the barbed wire, you know, is something that is anticipated in the National Electrical Safety Code in as a means to, as a deterrent to keep people from getting out into that very, into that very dangerous area where they could lose their life if they get in there. So we're proposing to allow barbed wire fencing around electrical substations.
Absolutely. No comments or hand raised on that one. Um, I think we can, uh, proceed.
Okay. We shall. Okay, so off street parking loading, uh, for a series of, of changes that are being proposed here. Uh, one is we have an issue with our parking requirement for nonprofit shelters. And then also shelters for when, uh, victims of domestic violence kind of being too, you know, too high, you know, so we're proposing to change, you know, the, the parking standards, you know, for those shelters, uh, for nonprofit shelters. And generally, it's, you know, one space per, you know, ten uh, people served as opposed to one space for three hundred and fifty. Uh, the one space for three hundred and fifty square feet of building area is, you know, really just, uh, you know, that's, that's the, that's the parking requirement for an office building. And so it doesn't make sense to have uh, an office parking requirement, you know, applicable to a nonprofit shelter. So we've changed that. Um, we're requiring in resident or in in areas where properties are being used for us, residential use, you know, single family, two family, three family and four family. That if you're storing your, your vehicle, you know, on your lot, that that area has to be paved like any other parking area that, you know, that's not in a garage, would have to be paved, same thing as the driveway leading to it. So pave vehicle storage area and pave, you know, access to the vehicle storage area. Uh, again, that's for, you know, serving single family, two family, three family and four family uses. Uh, we propose to some changes to the bike parking, you know, requirements. So if, if there's any change of, uh, of any change of use, you know, uh, in in a building, it's gonna require bike parking. Currently, it says that bike parking is only required, you know, if the, if the, if the change of use results in a bikes, the bicycle parking standard that is, uh, more than what the current, you know, you know, requirement is. So you could have a situation where you have a, a development that, that doesn't have, you know, bike parking, uh, you know, provided. And then they, as long as if they were to change it to another use, it has the same bike parking standard today. It could still remain nonconforming. This change is to try to get at, if you have a nonconforming number of bike spaces, if you change the use, you have to, you know, provide the number of bike spaces that are required for it, regardless if it, if you change, if the change of use requires more spaces than the existing one, uh, has or not. Um, we're also, um, looking to increase the bike parking requirements for multifamily developments that don't have a minimum off street parking requirement. So a good example would be in the downtown. Um, you know, we're in the CB, in the, in the, in the CSDP in the downtown, which is the central Salem Development Program area. There is no minimum parking requirement for, uh, multifamily, as well as if you have multifamily within a quarter mile of a core transit route of chariots, you don't have to have a minimum, you know, number of, of, uh, cars, vehicle spaces in, in order to kind of, and but then at the same time, our, our bicycle parking requirement didn't, didn't change. So the minimum bicycle parking requirement is greater of four spaces or point one space, uh, per dwelling unit. So uh, because, you know, they had, there's such a huge reduction in, in, in parking in these areas for vehicles, we feel that it's reasonable to require, you know, a corresponding, you know, if you don't have to do car parking, you should have to have, you know, bike parking to promote, uh, you know, use of that alternative mode of transportation. And, you know, like in the micro, then the micro, then you feel the building downtown and the micro units, you know, um, they, uh, have one bicycle parking space in every dwelling unit, you know, and they have also a bikes, a bike parking room, you know, on the ground floor that has, you know, uh, space for, you know, quite a few bikes. So, you know, they have more than the minimum of one space per unit for their development. So, you know, we think it's reasonable there. And, uh, there's also in the parking chapter today, we require a five foot landscape strip uh, between alleys and landscape or not landscape, uh, a five foot landscapes strip required between loading areas and the alley. Uh, we don't require a five foot landscape strip between parking areas and an alley. So, um, you know, to be consistent, it doesn't make sense to not have parking areas to have a setback next to an alley, but then require a loading area to have a five foot landscape setback. So to be consistent between for all vehicle, vehicle use series of budding an alley, we've proposed to eliminate the five foot setback for the, uh, uh, loading areas next to an alley.
Commissioner Pollak has a comment, followed by Commissioner Slater.
I, I just want to say for all of these, I thought they were not only reasonable, but more common sense, uh, uh, common sense, um, changes. So, that's especially the alleyways and the bike. So, thank you.
Commissioners Slater.
Thank you. Bryce, have we had any conversations about, um, addressing parking needs for motor scooters or motorcycles and things like that at all?
We have not.
Okay. I just, um, you know, my experience is, is that as cities grow, uh, motorcycle, motor scooter use starts to increase. Um, and I wonder if that's something that maybe we should address or even encourage, um, as we deal with, with parking.
Yeah, that's one area where code, yeah, we, yeah, we have vehicles based on bike. Yeah, we really don't speak to motorcycle, you know, at all. So it's definitely a gap.
It, it's my long term transportation solution. So I just want to make sure I'm accounted.
Commissioner Heller with, uh, then, uh, Commissioner Pollak.
Um, Bryce, could you explain to me, okay, once again, I'm concerned about the, um, elimination of the, uh, five foot landscaping. What was, what was the, um, the thing that you said, that the, the requirement that you said you were trying to coordinate this with to make it similar?
The, the, the fact that we don't require a similar setback between the, any parking areas of budding an alley.
Why don't we?
I thi- I think, you know, especially like in the, in the downtown and the CB zone context, you know, that alley is, is, you know, is more utilitarian, you know, utilitarian area where, you know, you think about like New York City or, you know, these, you know, urban areas where it's where, you know, you know, garbage trucks, you know, you know, provide acts, you know, get access to, you know, garbage in the back, you know, they use that. But then, and we are in the downtown, for instance, trying to make the alleys more, uh, you know, uh, usable and desirable and, you know, and have them as an active urban space. Uh, but I, you know, having a five foot wide, you know, landscape strip, you know, really, you know, starts to constrain, you know, the ability for, uh, be, you know, the, it, it limits, you know, where you can access, you know, the parking lot and behind the building. One thing in the downtown in these areas, we want to promote parking behind the building rather than being up next to the street. So if we can maintain that street presence and framing the public, you know, the public right of way and, and that urban environment on the street, you know, the, the, the rear, you know, in the alleys, the back of the, the lots is, is a little bit, I think, less, you know, important in terms of framing that, that public realm. And so they, it does kind of, you know, get in the way of, you know, vehicle access, maneuvering, it takes, you know, it kind of takes up space and and again, it's something that we don't require for, you know, parking lots, but it does for loading. And so if anything, it would make more sense to not have it for loading than parking where you have to have, you know, vehicles like having access to the building directly to, you know, well, maybe I guess you just park in the alley and then walk to the back and make a delivery. But, um, it's just one of those things where, you know, valley is kind of the back of house and the street is the front of house. We want to make sure that, you know, the front of house is maintained with, you know, you know, pedestrian enhancements and buildings up to the street. And then next to the alley, it's not as, hasn't been as much of a concern, you know, for trying to, again, for You know, for trying to again frame a public environment around the alley as well. It's been more kind of an area that's used for an access and service.
Yeah, I was just more concerned about eliminating more green. And, and so I kind of wondered whether. You're, you're right. Maybe the parking, parking is a better. Use of setbacks. So I don't know. I mean, I, 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 I see your, your point. I just get concerned when we start eliminating even from the urban areas. Greenery. I mean, that we just, and, you know, landscaping and look at what the temperatures have been. And I think. The more we can put in, the better off we're going to be. So that, that's just where my concern is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pollak.
Hi, thank you. This is goes with the Commissioner Slater's comment about motorcycles. Having spent ten days in San Francisco, it's amazing, which has no parking anywhere, it seems like. Amazing how many razors, scooters. Those little upright. I forget what they're called. The, you know, like their handles and they go everywhere. How many accommodations for parking for these they have because they're trying, because. There's no parking and because they're trying to eliminate a lot of the traffic in the city itself. I see a lot of accommodations for like. These little sort of Vespa type things that are to be rented and bicycles that are being rented and things like that. So. You know, but Commissioner Slater said, I think, you know, that's something to be considered in the future. Especially downtown. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised. So I, and I had a comment and then I lost it. Oh, yes. The regarding the, the parking, the reduced parking requirement for off-street parking for nonprofit shelters. I strongly recommend that city staff consider including on that list. Developments that are section eight or government assistance housing. If the, and, and not something like, oh, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the development, but out by the state hospital. Where just a percentage of the units are low income or government assistance housing. I, I think it would be most like to. A triplex or small apartment that is the entire facility is low income. Government assisted housing. There's a. Senior slash low income apartment complex that's a very small, I want to say it's. Eight units total. It's over by the main post office on Simpson Street. And that's, that's kind of what I'm picturing here is something like that would be. If redeveloped today would really benefit. If it was able to have reduced parking because so many folks that are in the low income housing tend to not have. The volume of vehicles that that little change might actually spur more folks to maybe put up some of the. Government assisted housing. I'm even, and from a personal standpoint, I'm looking at a, a project that is a fairly rough. Single-family residence that would remodel very well into a duplex or a triplex. That I just neighborhood and location, I, I wouldn't try to rent it as fair market. I would actually gear it towards low income. Government assisted housing. The, the hard part to the strategy of that remodel is the parking component because it has a single car driveway. And if it is converted into a duplex and then rented as low income housing. There's going to have to be some kind of conditional approval sought or an application for that. Elimination of parking because it's within a quarter mile of the. And it has all the other transit and, and back bike pathways around it. So. Food for thought that, again, just that projects that are entirely government assisted housing. Probably should be included on that list, requiring fewer parking spaces.
You know, I don't have it in front of me because my screen, sure my screen, but you know, Lisa, do we still, do we still have low income elderly housing? Was that, was that kept? You know, we do have, we do have a low income, you know, housing parking requirement, but, and it was, but it was specifically tied to elderly. I don't know if, you know. I can't remember if they, if that was retained, you know, or if, or if that. Still exists or not, they exist or not. Do you, do you know?
No, I don't know. I have to look. Let me look.
And, you know, that might be, you know, somewhere to start looking.
I would agree. Yeah, I think it's just something kind of worth looking at to make sure that it doesn't exist somewhere else in the code. But. If this is an opportunity to apply it. Yeah, I think it would, in conversation with. Mayor Bennett, we were talking about roadblocks to developers being willing to put up. Low income housing and programs that would. Motivate developers to do that. And I don't think there needs to be discounts or incentives so much as there needs to be more just a. Clear path for them to do it in a cost-effective manner and something like, you know, parking when these are the type. Of folks that can barely afford their housing, let alone a car, the requirement of, you know, one point seven five. Parking spaces per your dwelling unit. Wouldn't really have a whole lot of benefit.
Yeah.
And I don't see any other hands raised. So I think we can move on to the next item.
So the other thing with bike, with the off-street parking chapter is just have requirements again for bikes. And so we are proposing to introduce long-term biking. You have long-term bike parking standards into the mix of requirements for, you know, bike parking. Now, the thing I want to point out is that. It doesn't, you know, at this point mandate that, you know, you have to have, you know, a certain number of long-term parking spaces. What it does provide. You know, allow though, you know, for you to do is to have long-term bike parking spaces. That can satisfy a certain percentage of your minimum, you know, parking requirements. So we looked at Eugene and Portland, you know, for these standards and, you know, Eugene. You know, Portland had, you know, just specifies a minimum number of short-term bike parking spaces and a minimum number of long-term bike spaces that are required for each use. Eugene establishes a minimum, you know, requirement, required number of spaces and then says, you know, what the percentage of. Short-term, you know, long-term is. We're proposing to, you know, have a percentage of short-term, long-term, but. Only to the extent that it allows, you know, an applicant to choose to provide long-term. You know, if they, if they want to. So right now, you know, the, you know, for our parking, you know, whatever your space requirement is in the table. We generally, it's required to be outside, you know, within fifty feet of the building and clearly visible from the, the building for, you know, kind of security and, you know, so. Bike doesn't leave for, you know, and, and for convenience, you know, to get access to the entrance. So generally it's, you know, bike parking is outside the building, you know, and then if you want to provide it inside the building, you have to demonstrate that it's within a reasonable distance and. You know, so what we're trying to do, you know, for instance, like the case of the, you know, buildings in the downtown where you have housing. You know, to have, you know, but, you know, bike parking requirements, you know, on the outside of the building. Doesn't necessarily always makes, necessarily always make sense when it would be better suited for the residents to be in a bike room or, you know, bike parking in individual units themselves. So. You know, for instance, if you look at the bike, proposed bike parking table. For residential units, you know, it's, you know, a hundred percent of your bike parking requirement could be, you know, met in long-term. You know, so if you have, you know, if you're listening to downtown and you're had, you have to have a minimum of, you have a ten-unit building and you need to provide ten, you know, bike. Bike parking spaces, that bike parking space requirement now would, we'd, we'd say, well, those need to be ten spaces outside the building. And but under this proposed amendment, you wouldn't have to do that. You would be able to designate them as long-term spaces, a hundred percent of them. And they could be, they could be inside the building on vertical racks. As you, you know, shown here and on the wall, they could be inside, you know, the dwelling unit themselves on a rack. So we're introducing that as an option, not a requirement, but you can choose to provide long-term. And I will also point out that. When you look at the table and it says maximum, you know, fifty percent of the spaces provided, it's not the actual number of spaces you do provide. It's just. The, the minimum. So if, if you have a minimum requirement of, of, of. To, let's say for retail use in the downtown or if anywhere else, a requirement of four bikes, bike spaces. And half of them have to be long, you know, half of them can be long-term. You, you can, as long as you maintain. Two minimum short-term spaces and two minimum long-term spaces, you've met the standard. It doesn't mean that you can't provide more long-term if you want to. It's just based on whatever your core minimum number of bike space requirements are. You can't exceed the, the, this percentage identified in the table for that core amount. You know, again, we don't want to disincentivize people to do more if they want to. But, you know, we also don't, we want, also want to make sure that people aren't, you know, that they still have the number of short-term spaces that are kind of needed for a more temporary. You know, you know, customer service base as opposed to, you know, a more long-term, you know, worker, you know, if you're a staff person that works in an office, you might have. You might want to have more long-term, a long-term space, you know, in the building or in a secure area somewhere else. It's maybe not necessarily right by the door of the building as opposed. To a retail store or a restaurant where you want to have more short-term bicycle spaces where, you know, you have a, you know, more turnover for, you know. The, you know, clients who are coming to patronize the store. And so, you know, depending on, you know, whether or not the use is mainly kind of geared towards a long-term bicycle. Parking requirement or, or, or short-term bicycle, you know, and parking demand. We want to provide the flexibility to address that. And then the, the chapter also, you know, will introduce, you know, some new graphics and a new table that kind of reorganizes. The space standards and, and illustrates, you know, kind of the space requirements and the aisle widths for vertical spaces and horizontal spaces. And I will note all those graphics that are shown in the. In the table, those will be updated to be correct. You know, there is just to illustrate the concept of, of wanting to make it clear, you know, what a vertical space is. What its dimensions are, how much of an eye with you need to have, you know, what are the dimensions of a, of a bike locker? So we've done that to make it a little bit better. And so, yeah, it's the big thing here is introducing long-term bicycle parking as an allowed. Bike parking, not requiring it, but allowing it as a, as a means to meet a percentage of your minimum requirement.
We have no hands raised. Let's proceed to the next item.
Okay. Landscaping and screening chapter, just a couple amendments proposed here. One is that the landscape chapter has a. A section that deals with tree replanting. And it says that if you're going to, if you're removing trees, you know, from the, the perimeter setbacks. Of the development site or over seventy-five percent of the trees in the lot that you have to replant. That's a redundant standard to the tree preservation requirements we have in our, our tree ordinance already. So in the landscaping requirements, you know, of eight oh seven are really geared to. Apply to non-resident, multi-family and non-residential development, not, you know, single family, two family, three family and four family. So we're making it clear that, you know, the replanting requirements under chapter eight oh seven are not applicable to single family, two family and three family and four family. It's instead the, the tree ordinance that deals with that under chapter eight oh eight. And then also we're introducing a requirement for a landscaping permit. Situations where you have to do site plan review. If there is a, a development that's been proposed, like if you're modifying your parking lot, for instance. So if you're modifying your parking lot. That requires site plan review, but it doesn't require a building permit. So you go through site plan review and get, get your, 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 your modified parking, you know. Lot change approved inside planner view, but we don't have any mechanism to. Have a, have a permit that's applied, you know, for, just for landscaping to ensure that, you know, the landscaping that you're putting in at the end of the day. Meets the site planner view. So we've introduced this landscaping permit requirement in chapter eight oh seven. It's a type one procedure. It's just like a building permit. No, no notices required, anything like that. It's just, you know, you submit your landscaping. You know, in compliance with your site point review approval. It's, it's the mechanism that we review it to make sure it's complete and meets the requirements. We issue that permit. And then, you know, it also provides a mechanism for us to, you know, have inspections when we have to go out to the site and look at, you know, what was done to make sure it meets the approval. So it's just a mechanism to really ensure that for, if you're doing a development that doesn't require the, the, the building permit that still does require landscaping, then we have a means to. You know, to review and approve the actual like permit for the work to be done.
Commissioner Slater has his hand raised.
You knew I was going to ask a question on this one. So Bryce, a couple of things. Are there landscape requirements, tree planting requirements for one, two, three, four family dwellings? That are infill units as opposed to subdevelopments?
Like land divisions. Like if you're dividing a lot. So, yeah, if you're, you don't like, you know, the, the replant, the planting requirements only come into play. For one, two, three and four, you know, when you are that, that are. Subdiv, you know, subdivisions.
Right.
Yeah. And in partitions where you've created lots.
Right. So if someone just buys a vacant lot and they want to put up. One, two, three, four unit dwelling, there is no landscape requirements currently?
You know, Lisa, could you check, could you check down that real quickly? So I'm not sure. I don't have it in front of me. I, I, I think it's just land. It's just. Replanting requirement is tied to the land division itself. And I could next screen here, but.
So that, that may be a small little loophole, but maybe one that we could plug down the road. If there's an appetite to do that. And then. At some point, I think it would be worth having a conversation about. The particular landscape items that are being recommended or encouraged in our code. And I say this particularly with respect to grass. You know, we're dealing with climate change. We've got some water issues. And at some point, I think it makes sense to look at our landscaping requirements and see if they don't need to be realigned a little bit to. To reduce any sort of summer water use or things that might be more appropriate for what, what is the future of our climate. And I say that because I, I drove down the street the other day and Costco had just put down, you know, all their new grass and they're watering their grass and all their new trees. And I thought, well. May, maybe we ought to revisit what some of our standards are around landscaping.
And that's very, and then that might be one, you know, because we have the whole climate action plan and, you know, within part of the implementation of our Salem, that might, yeah. Be part of a, you know, probably, yeah, the greater, you know. Code project and justice. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I've got a follow-up on Commissioner Slater's comments. And I don't have the code in front of me, but when we built our house back in twenty sixteen, Commissioner Slater, if I remember correctly. We were required to plant only one tree and two plants. And that was it. And. I think the expectation for new home builders today is, is different than ten years ago. When I used to work for a major framing contractor. During college and after college, it was quite funny to see homes go up and there was no lawn because that was an added cost. And lots of people would say, oh, I won't take the grass. Just give me my one tree and my two plants and we'll figure it out. And there was all these. Ugly dirt-covered lots in this like two hundred home subdivision. And it was, it was quite funny. But I, I, I brought this up in a, a work session early on. And I wanted to take this opportunity to reiterate it that. Going back to the, the idea of. Landscape requirements for whether it's new subdivision or infill development. Maybe instead of an additional tree requirement to get trees planted. Do a incentive for builders that if they plant more than the minimum standard. That they get, I don't know, so many hundred dollars per tree off of their building permit. I floated this in front of a couple of, uh, single-family home builders. And the, the resounding response was, heck, yeah, I'd. Plant more trees if I save, you know, two hundred dollars per tree that I put in. And I think to me, that just spoke volumes that it was a very simple way to get builders. To, to put in a higher density of trees that we really do need. So. And then we do have a comment or a hand raised from Commissioner Pollak.
So this, this tree, tree section was, this kind of came up on our. Climate change. Zoning, zoning. With the homeowners builders. And so I see here that you put on the screen the tree planting requirements, six thousand square feet or six thousand feet or less to trees. Now, how does that work with your proposed change on D tree replanting where provisions of the subsection do not apply to lots used for single family uses, two family uses, three family uses, four family uses or cottage clusters? Because the whole idea of our zoning and building closer and especially the cottage clusters is to use use that area to provide um more housing in a smaller lot of land. Um, but you know, and that doesn't mean we don't want landscaping. It's just that how do you put a tree in a bunch of, you know? Uh, how do you put a bunch of trees in these areas when you're trying to create, you know, cottage clusters? I think there's like a, like a um a a battle of hardships here. Do we want to use a lot to to provide more housing or do we want to use a lot to, I mean, use you use that extra space for trees?
I'm gonna see the difference speed real quick, though. You know, the other chapter is eight and what you're what you're looking at and you cited in terms of it's not applicable. You know, to the single family, two family, that's under chapter eight oh seven, which is the landscaping chapter. This is chapter eight oh eight. And so chapter eight oh eight is 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 more applicable to resident, you know, the residential side, you know, especially single family, two family. And to answer Commissioner Slater's question, it does say within development proposals for the creation of lots or parcels to be used for today. It's a single family, two family. We previously talked about amendments. We're expanding this to say, single family, two family, three family, four family and cottage clusters, but it's but it's for the creation of lots. So it's you know, if it's a an existing law that's been, you know, in place for years and it wasn't subject to a uh a tree conservation plan, you know, through, you know, with a subdivision or partition. It, you know, just developing a a triplex or a fourplex on that existing pre-existing lot wouldn't trigger the tree planting requirements, you know, so there there is a gap, you know, uh in that respect.
Okay, okay. So but let's say they're creating new subdivision and they want to do like cottage clusters in an area and four plaques here and, you know, um town homes here and single family here, just sort of a a myriad of of rainbow of different types of things. Um you you feel that this chart is giving the builder enough um, you know, in other words, enough balance to do what he, what the goal is on our zoning for more housing. Uh but yet not not preventing him because of the trees. Is that what I'm saying here in here?
I I think uh they're they're gonna, you know, they have to, you know, carefully, you know, look at the proposal and if you recall, under the tree or, you know, the proposed recommendations, the tree changes to the tree code, we're going to going to propose showing that the critical root zone for all the trees on the tree conservation plan. So when the proposal comes in, you know, they'll need to show that area in relation to the lots and then the building envelope. And so we'll be able to make better sit, you know, both applicant and staff, the applicant will have a better understanding of what really can and cannot be saved. You know, when they're looking to divide the lot and then staff will be able to look at that and say, you know, because right now we don't really know, you know, we don't, we don't have a great mechanism to understand, like if if the applicant says I'm gonna save this tree, you know, on, you know, on the boundary of this lot here without knowing what not, without seeing the critical root zone. You know, it's hard to understand. Well, yeah, is that is that tree really going to be able to be saved when they come in for development once the lot is planted? Or is it going to be a situation where uh the person who's purchased it, you know, wants to take that tree out because, you know, the roots are into the into the into this corner of the buildings, you know, where the building is going to be. So, you know, having that, it'll help us to that the plans to be, I think, more accurate and reflect what can and can't be saved. Uh, I think there's always, you know, there's gonna always going to be a little bit of a, you know, a push and shove, you know, between, you know, the density and the you know, but there's ways to design sites to, you know, achieve, you know, both. And so um, you know, I think, you know, try and, you know, we we have a situation where we need to try to achieve, you know, higher densities to address the problems we're having with our our climate and and just accommodating growth and then also save trees. So I think it's, you know, there's going to be some push and pull, but uh, you know, I think both can be achieved through, you know, careful laying out of the side and in and there are mechanisms, you know, to, you know, to ask to tab, you know, leniency and flexibility in in the tree conservation plan. If there's just, you can, there's just no way to, there's no reasonable design alternative to to save the number of trees that are required. So and then in terms of the planting replanting requirements, um, you know, we're proposing, for instance, in within the amendments, if you are uh saving a significant tree in a lot, that significant tree you're saving on the lot counts for two uh counts for two trees you would have to plant. So that is an incentive, you know, to, you know, so if you have a nice tree, you're saving it, that counts for two trees of that you don't have to plant now.
Yeah, yeah, I I see that and and and, you know, like developers the li- I mean, I'm not, I'm on on their side a hundred percent, but landscape is very expensive. So I would think that if they wanted to not have to spend money on a tree and but yet they can design the area to save that significant tree, that would be wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Uh, back to Commissioner Slater.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that when we talk about trees, we're we're making sure that we distinguish between, you know, the challenges of preserving mature trees and then um new tree planting requirements, because it's it's obviously much easier to plant new trees and accommodate construction than it is on the preservation side. So just as we talk about these things, I just want to make sure we keep those two pieces separate. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, no uh further hands raised, Bryce. We can move on to the next item.
Okay, we're at the the last slide, everybody, the last slide. So uh, so this is about commercial parking. We kind of talked about this earlier. We're changing, you know, commercial parking under chapter four hundred to be not parking that's serving with like signs for this user. It's just a public parking area that you could pay at that's open to everybody. Or not necessarily have to pay, it's the parking area that's available to everybody, not just a specific user. So we're changing that. Uh, and then in terms of, you know, the other changes associated with it in the residential zones, the RA RS RM one, RM two and RH zones, we allow commercial parking as a transitional use, you know, in those zones, we're proposing to eliminate that because having a and 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 it applies where there's a a residential zone lot that abouts a a commercial zone lot. Uh, but having, you know, a commercial zone lot being taken up by a parking lot, you know, is is, you know, again, and I, you know, something that we we have a housing crisis. We don't want to, you know, take residential zone land and dedicate it to parking lots for, you know, commercial development. So we're eliminating it from there. And then also uh in terms of the Edgewater Streets and Second Street Mixed Use Corridor Zone, SBU Zone. Um, that is a zone where uh that allows commercial parking, but we're proposing to make that a uh just eliminate commercial parking in that zone too, because Edgewater and Second Street, it's an important, you know, kind of mixed use couple it where we want to see again, buildings that are up next to the street and to have areas that are uh commercial parking lots, um taking up building space. It was not something we fill the staff is a is a good thing in a mixed use corridor like that.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, no hands raised. I think we can move on. And if that was your last slide. Yes. We would go to public comments next. And we have a couple people that are signed up. Um, uh, Steve Anderson, uh, West Salem Neighborhood Association. Um, and he had to leave the meeting, but I believe he left his comments with Lisa. Lisa, are you uh planning to state his comment into the record?
Absolutely. Yes. Um, yeah, I think West Salem meets right now. So he had to go um to the neighborhood meeting, but he wanted to express his support for the changes to the Edgewater Second Street uh zone. There's a proposal to not allow commercial parking lots. So it's changing from permitted to not permitted. He wanted to express support for that. That's it.
Okay. And uh, the second person that we have signed up for public comment is Ron Ped. Um, Ron, if you would uh state your name and address for the record, I think we still do that during the work session, but I could be wrong. And then you'll have three minutes uh to talk.
One second. I dropped my li- my um mouse.
Nope, nope. Timer started. Just kidding.
All right. Um, I want to state for the record first of all, but I I keep chickens and I'm a recovering swineherd. Never mind, that was humor. I'll move on. Uh, I'm gonna talk tonight about pedestrian access. Um, right now we have a standard that kind of meets that is one size fits all. And I'm an architect by profession. I'm sorry, I didn't state my address. I did not. Sixty eight fifty Burnett Street, Southeast Salem, nine seven three one seven. Um, pedestrian access that one size fits all. A lot of my practice is infill type development. And some of the problems we're having recently is trying to come up with a way to connect pedestrians. We we it's a very important thing that we provide pedestrian access to to our buildings, but um I'd like to point out a couple unintended consequences and see if there can't be some sort of either menu or um different uh solutions for different sized projects. Uh, small projects say less than twenty thousand square feet on corners should be, should only be required to have connections to the public right away. Um, consider a hundred by hundred foot development on on the corner while fifteen percent landscape is is required. However, it is nearly impossible to provide GSI five foot permanent landscape, ten foot buffer at the parking without covering thirty percent of the site. In a mixed use zones, many overlay zones, you're required to uh put fif- to cover fifty percent of the developable width with uh with building. A sec connection to to a second street is of dubious value because it's such a small lot. And but it does really um prevent some of the things you can do with a lot. For example, uh, we were talking to, you were discussing to uh earlier bike parking and its proximity to the front door. It's 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 a very difficult thing to be able to to do that on on the smaller infill lots. Infill lots are important. I believe infill lots, whether they're small commercial, small residential are a solution to a lot of our problems we have going back and uh using existing um infrastructure streets and uh that that's the area that needs to have redevelopment and and to be denser and higher density. There's a provision in the new ordinance regarding um pedestrian connections is not required between primary buildings building entrances of a building and each adjacent street if the development site is a corner lot and the building has a primary building entrance that is located within twenty feet of the pedestrian connection to the property. I would propose that we uh drop the twenty foot representation because with accessibility, it's nearly impossible. You can only have about ten inches of 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 grade difference between buildings uh between the, excuse me, the building finished floor and the sidewalk. And so the the it kind of is a difficult standard to match just because I can't provide uh handicap accessibility. And the other thing I'd like to uh address with is figure eight hundred point one one, which is the graphic standard is part of the of the demonstrating the the objective of of the um pedestrian walkway. Um, I think the era of the big box store is probably gone. And certainly in Salem, there really isn't. I think I I was counting in my head, there's probably two parcels that are still big enough that you could do a big box store on, but probably isn't gonna happen because that's just not the the nature of of the business anymore. Uh, but frequently, we're we're asking for many interior pedestrian access from the right way. Well, the fact of the matter is, is if if I'm have a shopping center, um I'm trying to think of one in my mind, but like say Fred Meyer's South.
Sorry, Ron, we're we're at the three minutes now. Um, can you can you wrap up?
Uh, I've got more, so that's fine. I'm done.
Okay. So that concludes uh our uh public comment. Um Oh, I was just told I could actually give you another couple minutes, Ron, if you wanted to finish your thought.
What 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 I'm looking for would be a way, a a different methodology, or at least a menu of items to provide pedestrian connectivity to the right way without prescribing a methodology. Because I think when you, when you consider pedestrian traffic sta- uh patterns and bike uh buses and and whatnot, that there's a lot of opportunities lost and uh a large financial investment that uh sometimes doesn't yield the intended purpose. With that, I conclude my remarks. And if I, if there's any questions, we have an answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, we've got uh Commissioner Pollock followed by Commissioner Slater.
Okay, so um first of all, I want to thank you and um and to acknowledge that we received your written comment on this stuff that you're testifying today. Um, but on some of these these um percentages that you're using, um, are you looking at at as they are now or some of the ones that are proposed to be kind of reduced in our, you know, um a new zoning and the in in changes in the zoning areas? Have you looked at those?
I have indeed.
Yeah, you ha- you have. So this, this is actually in line with that or?
I don't believe they're changing. And and if 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 they are changing, for example, um they probably are getting more restrictive or uh taking more developable ground off a small parcel. That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Slater.
Uh, I I'm gonna withdraw my question. Thank you.
I see no further questions. So I believe that concludes um uh the public comment. Uh no other uh folks have signed up. Um information, I don't believe we have any uh informational reports. Uh, so we would move to planning administrator's report.
Um, just a reminder that we're having a regular meeting tomorrow. So we'll be back uh again for probably a long night. So um, thanks again for coming tonight. And then on the agenda tomorrow will be a resolution to initiate the code amendments. That just allows us to officially start the process, send the notice to the state and schedule the public hearing. And we can continue to make changes based on comments tonight and public testimony we receive. And then obviously through the hearing process. Um, and then I think Olivia probably told you at the last meeting that we're gonna stay virtual for a while. That's all I know. That's all I have. Thank you.
The what did you just say? What was the last thing you said?
We're gonna stay virtual for a while.
Oh, oh, okay.
So don't don't plan to come to the chambers anytime soon. Sorry.
Well, thank you. Um, I appreciate the abrupt uh report on our uh special session. Um, that's really nice since we crushed out three hours of work. And uh and then just so everyone is aware, I will not be available to participate in tomorrow night's um hearing is I am on vacation and I did agree to participate this evening. Um, and sit up here looking at this view, but tomorrow is family, so I will be uh missing out.
Um, it does look like Commissioner Slater might have had a comment to Lisa.
No. No, I, this is more of a a comment for all of us. Uh, so maybe I jumped the agenda order, but it seems to me like we might all benefit from a conversation about maybe our least favorite topic, which is parking. Um, this has come up on a number of occasions. It's a, it's an issue that's coming up in some of our hearings. Um, and I just wonder as a commission whether we want to spend some time thinking strategically about how we want to address this issue, how we want to address car and automobile issues uh rather than just have um these issues unfold hearing by hearing. So I will, I'll throw that out there as something that maybe we all want to get together and do a work session on, or at least have a conversation on, uh, because I feel like Because I feel like that's certainly for me, an issue that's I've seen repeated.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised, but I do think that would be potentially a worthwhile conversation for commission and staff to have. So I think I will ask if there's any other comments for good of the order. Anybody? Anybody?
I'm ready to do three hours again tomorrow. I'm not in Hawaii.
Maybe more.
Maybe more. Uh, I will say, you know, we can see the reflection of the palm tree behind you, Commissioner Levin. And, and that really makes it all worthwhile for me.
Thank you. I'm just glad that when my daughter started screaming after she woke up from her nap, that I was able to hit mute before I opened the door to run inside and tell her that everything was okay. All right.
Thank you for your dedication, Commissioner Levin, and thank you for being the temporary presiding officer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
On the fly. That's great.
I appreciate that. This was a lot of fun getting to play president. Nobody ever gives me that much authority. So I promise not to abuse it or let it go to my head. And I think we can call this work session adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Bye.